All right, so let's go ahead and get started. This is the City Council workshop for the Planning Commission and the City Council to discuss the following items we're going to discuss. So let's call the order, Madam City Clerk.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, the record will reflect that all Planning Commissioners are present, all council members are present, and our city attorneys are joining us via Zoom.
All right, are there any public comments? Oh, sorry, I didn't see, all right. Would everybody please stand? Would you join me in saluting the flag? Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, thank you. And now, do we have any public comments?
Mr. Mayor, we have public, we do not have any public comments on non-agenda items.
Okay, perfect. So, we will go right into the joint meeting of the City Council and Planning Commission. May I have a staff report?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, can everyone hear me okay?
Yep.
Good morning, members of the council, members of the commission, members of the public. We're here today as a follow-up to the meeting we had in the fall, the joint meeting we had in the fall, generally talking about Old Town alcohol policy. Again, this is a joint meeting. The, we went through a lot in the last meeting, so I'm not going to go through the depth of information that we did in the lead-up to the policy discussions last time around, but I do want to talk a little about the structure of the meeting and what we're hoping to accomplish today specifically. And then one important point is, just to reiterate, that we shouldn't discuss any specific applications or any specific businesses here today, this is a general policy discussion. As I did last time, want to talk, you know, I always like to start with why are we here? And I think that's a positive message. You know, there's, some of this stuff can get a little heavy, but I think the entire reason that we're here is a positive one, and that's that Old Town is a success, and I think we can all agree to that. And I like to kick off these types of meetings with, with that. So, what that has, of course, come with its share of public safety and code enforcement challenges, which is, you know, why we're here to talk. We have a bunch of CUPs out there, which I described last time, and kind of a light was shown on how those are all different, and they've kind of evolved over time, and there was a desire to kind of maybe, uniform, make more uniform CUPs in the future. We're looking for direction on Old Town's vision, which we got mostly last time, but then there's, there's some specific policy issues and programs that we were directed to come back and present to you, and we're looking for direction on that. So, of course, this feedback is important, not only to Old Town, while we'll be talking about mostly Old Town today, you know, there are wider implications for the city uptown in the future, future mixed-use development, so keep that in mind as well. But then, very specifically, we are looking for feedback to create more consistent alcohol policy for future CUPs, type 90 licenses, and outdoor live entertainment. Just, you know, just really quickly, I went into this in-depth last time, not going to go nearly in-depth this time, but I think it was important to, to reiterate that, you know, Old Town is a success, but it wasn't by accident. There are many, the city as well as private stakeholders that have made it what it is today. It came about through a community-developed vision, which was then turned into a strategy and then implementation through, by the city, as well as private investment. And, Mr. Mayor, I showed this, this, this picture last time, and you thought it was interesting. I don't know when this was taken, it was taken a long time ago. But, this is what it is now. So, I think this demonstrates the intention of the city and the private stakeholders to turn Old Town into what it is today, and to continue to do that intentionally into the future. Again, Old Town was originally designated a historic place by the county in 1979, the original specific plan was in 1994, which is where the real visioning took place, because there wasn't much to actually see or feel back then. And then, of course, 2010, there was a major amendment to the specific plan, which is the, the guiding document, regulating document that we are using as of today. So, in the previous joint meeting that we had in the fall, there were three pieces of direction that we received, and I wanted to summarize those now. The first was, Planning Commission, City Council directed staff to return with standard conditions of approval relating to conditions of, conditional use permits that involve the sale of alcohol, and then with ultimately the idea of taking those and turning them into uniform conditions of approval that would be put in the code. The second was to provide further clarification on type 90 music entertainment venue licenses and present a potential policy framework for the, for the PC and the CC to kind of chew on. And then finally, to facilitate, facilitate a discussion revisiting outdoor live entertainment in Old Town. And the presentation from this point forward is going to be structured like this, there will be three sections, we'll discuss each one individually, council will be able to provide a direction at the end of each section, and then we'll move to the next. So that takes us to our first discussion item, which is the standard conditions of approval for alcohol-related CUPs. Recall, the council and Planning Commission received a presentation, an in-depth presentation regarding these matters previously, and then there was direction to bring back and set a condition, a standard condition, conditions of approval, and then move forward, like I said earlier, with those being placed in the municipal code. Just to get everybody back up to speed, because sometimes this stuff can be a little bit convoluted, what is a CUP? A CUP is a permit, it's a conditional use permit, but it's a negotiated deal between a private commercial entity and the city to allow for specific land uses with restrictions. How does it work? It's a land use entitlement, which means that it lives with the land, and, and it's not tied to a business owner or a specific property owner, it's tied to the land, and as the property changes hands, the CUP goes with it in perpetuity. How do you obtain a CUP? It's a city application, and nothing, you know, interesting here, it's just, it requires a public hearing, statement of operations, and then, of course, the agreed-upon conditions of approval, which is the negotiated part. You need one for, obviously, the sale of hard alcohol, but not just hard alcohol, you need one for impactful uses, car washes, event centers, et cetera, that could have other impacts beyond public safety, like traffic or parking. And in the past, you needed one for entertainment, but of course, now we have the entertainment license process, which has separated entertainment from the CUP application process. A little bit on our type ABC license types in Old Town, so these aren't CUPs, these are ABC licenses in Old Town. You can see the top portion, we have three wine growers, we have two brew pubs or microbreweries, we have eight type 41s, which are restaurants with beer and wine, those do not require a CUP. We have 25 restaurants that have full liquor, type 47, which is the most common, and then we have one type 48, which is a bar nightclub. And then, down at the bottom, those are, those are liquor stores, or off, off-sale means you purchase and you leave, so it's, it's like a liquor store. Of those 39 ABC licenses, 15 of those are approved for operation past midnight. That was a question that was asked last time, so that's the answer to that. Some of the challenges we discussed last time, just to reiterate, one of the big ones is morphing of restaurants to nightclubs, staying open beyond approved closing time, operating over occupancy, serving hard alcohol without any permits, operating live entertainment without any permits, both indoors and outdoors, over-serving, private security creating dangerous conditions, and operating adult entertainment, which is not permitted in Old Town. You may recall this graph, this was a graph presented to you previously, showing Riverside Sheriff's Department calls for service in two-hour increments from 5-1, 2022 to 5-1, 2023, generally just to, to demonstrate that the calls obviously are weighted towards the evening time and a significant number past midnight. Recently, Captain Durham and his team were able to provide us some DUI data, which was also a question from the previous meeting. This is citywide data, so there were 360, 76 DUI, DUIs in 2023. On the right, you see a listing by hour, how many were issued throughout the year. And what we noticed is 40% of those DUIs occurred within 4 a.m., with a four-hour time span from 12 to 4 a.m. The majority of the arrests occurred in the Old Town area. 70% of all DUIs have a nexus to Old Town, which, and, you know, Captain may want to talk about this, but I believe that means that not only were the DUIs in Old Town associated with Old Town, but other DUIs in the rest of the city, 70% of those have somehow a nexus to Old Town, they were drinking in Old Town, they were in Old Town, something of that nature, prior to the DUI. And in all, we had 80 injuries and two fatalities in the year of 2023. So again, back to, back to the direction that we received, you know, I think the desire was to make each CUP less unique in as much a way as possible, and so that's what we were attempting to do, and we developed some conditions of approval, some we already have, some that we developed new with, with our consultant, and we'll present those now. One that was not developed after the meeting, that was actually directed to staff during the meeting, was the idea of all future CUPs having a closing time of 12 a.m. So that was, that was, that will be, that's part of the presentation. But importantly, this does not apply to current existing CUPs. So if you have a CUP now, what we're about to, what we just talked about, what we're about to talk about, doesn't apply to you unless you come in to try to amend it, amend your CUP for whatever reason. There are many, we have, the, the amount of COAs that we've put together, there's, it's a whole packet of them, so there's like 20 pages of them. Most of them are just common sense. These are a few of the categories that the standard COAs would, would address, so, you know, ban customer log, cut off log, if someone's cut off, to keep a log of that. Entertainment, obviously, headcount, meals, the big one, a big new one is a condition dealing with morphing, or not allowing morphing from, you know, your permitted business to something else. And then, some, some things we're, we're looking to do on the front end with code enforcement, as well as RSO, which is to meet with new CUP applicants prior to them opening their business, having the sheriffs meet with the security team prior to opening, to ensure communication is flowing freely. We think that's an important thing to do, as well as right to cancel an event, and, and a few other things. And this is just some more of the categories that we're looking to make standard COAs. Many of these we are already using, we just want to make them codified in the, in the actual code, because if we, the idea of codifying in the code really is twofold, it's to standardize, but it's also to take these conditions off the negotiating table. So if they're in the code, it's not negotiable, they're required every single CUP that comes in. So, I know that was quick, but that was, that was really the, the direction that we received on this specific issue. If, depending on the discussion that takes place, if you direct us to continue to move forward, this will require an amendment to the municipal code to get these in there, we'll have to do appropriate level of SEQA, it'll take, you know, public hearings at the Planning Commission and the City Council, and we're estimating a four-to-five-month timeframe to make that happen, depending on what the direction is today. So that's the end of Section 1, and I'll, Mr. Mayor, I'll turn it over to you for discussion.
So, I believe, now, for us to actually, and then, would that be, yeah?
I have no questions of staff, Mr. Mayor. Sorry, any questions of staff?
Just one quick question for you, because I, okay, just one quick question for you. I was right at the end, you talked about, I love the fact that we were going to have the sheriff heading out there with the, to meet with the owners and security, I think that's wonderful, I think that's a really good idea. Just out of curiosity, something I hadn't heard before about canceling events, what does that look like?
I think the idea there is that if there is going to be an event, and sheriff's department determines that there's an imminent public safety threat, that they have the ability to postpone or cancel that event. I, I don't know, I, I think I'll turn it over to Ms., Captain Durham, to describe that a little further, but I think that's the idea.
Good morning. That's exactly the idea, that sometimes you have out-of-state, or out-of-the-area players coming in, that may be gangs, rival gangs showing up, things of that nature, that for public safety, I would just like to shut it down, to make sure everyone's safe and tell them to go back home.
Thank you.
All right, let's move on to public comments then.
Can we ask any questions over here?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, I forgot you're there.
Okay. Yeah, I do, I also want to reiterate that I think that's great for RSO to meet with businesses with a new CUP and what is involved with that, I think that's awesome. But my question is, for Luke, I guess, really is, for those CUPs right now, that we have 15 of them that are approved for after midnight, and those that are not, and really, maybe this is for the audience too, but those that are not playing by the rules, what are our options there?
Well, we, we just, we just went through this as a city with a CUP holder that was non-compliant, and the options are, they're, they're not short, they're not easy, but ultimately, what we try to do first and foremost is gain compliance, so we work with, through RSO, and we work through code enforcement, and whoever else we need to work through, to try to get them into compliance, that's, that's number one, and that, that process usually takes quite a while, because that's the preferred outcome for all CUP holders in the city. If, you know, ultimately, we are not, the city is not successful in gaining compliance from a CUP holder, then the city has to move to revoke that CUP, and that, you know, typically requires litigation, and everything that comes along with litigation.
Okay, thank you. I think this, just for questions, right?
Yeah.
Okay, I think that was it, thanks.
Commissioner Hagel. Okay. Since CUPs go with the land and not with the business, I was curious as to how far back some of these CUPs go. Did they, you know, were they approved towards the beginning of us becoming a city, or is most of it more recent?
I would say since the late 90s. That's when they started, with, with, with them picking up a little bit, as Old Town has picked up.
Okay.
And there's been more businesses, but they're, they're kind of spread out across the last 20 years or so.
Okay.
And, and I think that's why they look so different, because they, they were approved in different eras.
Yeah, definitely different eras, yeah.
Thank you, just one question for now. I also like the idea of the RSO meetings with staff and security, but it's been mentioned that that's for new CUP applicants. Is there any plan or intention to have those types of meetings with the existing CUP and business owners in Old Town?
I, I think that that's already kind of taking place through Metro, the, the relationships that have, well, they were nonexistent before, they're, you know, we have code, we have RSOs out there, we have fire, so there, there, these are conditions that will be required, right? So they're, and they will ensure that these conversations take place before a business starts operating, as a matter of their approved CUP. With the CUPs we have now, that's obviously not in there as a requirement, so, but we're, that doesn't mean that's not happening, that doesn't mean that RSO, doesn't mean that code, doesn't mean the city staff is not working to talk with, with whoever is down there operating right now, and that's, that has been taking place.
Okay, I just, I think good for uniformity also, I mean, obviously, the requirement is there, and the relationships that the Metro team has with those businesses, I think is great, but if there was kind of a specific, hey, we'd really like to meet with your staff and your security team, to go over this, the, the same way that you would with a new CUP, for, for that same uniformity, I think could be helpful. And I know, I know that's just, it would be a request, because you couldn't require it.
Yeah.
But I, I think of that, that formal intention for the same type of meeting could be beneficial.
Understood.
Thank you.
No question.
I have a quick one, Luke, is that on? There you go. Quick question, since the one action taken by the city to revoke the CUP, have we seen a, less of a problem with other problem areas, so to speak? Just real general, I'm sure the, the revocation of the one CUP generated a lot of discussion among the community, and I'm just wondering if that had a positive effect, no effect, or the other?
Can't speak for RSO, but I can, I can speak for code enforcement, and, and just the city in general, and I, you know, that wasn't, what happened with the revocation of the CUP was what it was, everyone knows what happened there, but there were also a number of other discussions going on behind the scenes with other CUP holders during that time period, that I think a better understanding between the city and those CUP holders was established. And, and, and there're probably other reasons why, but from my perspective, I believe that the operational environment in terms of CUPs in Old Town has improved since that time.
Thank you.
All right, on to public comments.
Mr. Mayor, we have three speakers on this agenda item, each speaker is limited to five minutes. The first speaker is Bob Quaid, to be followed by Andrew Doty. At the podium, sir.
Honorable Mayor and members of the council, thank you for having this meeting, I think this is really important for our community, and that was a, a nice presentation, Luke, thank you. I, I first was exposed to Temecula back in the 70s, when my company sent me out here to do an audit of Callaway Vineyards, and I remember Old Town Front Street being just a bunch of feed stores and a gravel road, and so, when I moved out here in 2020, 2003, so I've been here for 20 years, I've seen you guys build up Old Town Front Street to a, to a wonderful place for us all to go to. I'm really proud of our city for the work that they've done in Old Town Front Street, it's a great place for, for me and my friends to go down to, Old Town Blues Club and Bailey's and all these, all these restaurants that have popped up, have great food, great entertainment, but I think I speak not only for myself, but I know there's some members here that didn't sign up for public speaking, members from different churches around here. We do not want to see any liberalization of any of the alcohol policies in the city. As I think you can see from the statistics up here, that all the, 70% of the DUIs were after midnight, and we do not want to see our, our public safety jeopardized by liberalization of any alcohol policies, we don't want to see lives lost, we don't want to see our police, sheriffs, I'm sorry, our sheriff's budget go up with additional enforcement, because policies have been liberalized and, and institutions are allowed to serve alcohol later, later into the early morning hours. So I just want to ask you to think of the, the, the citizens of this city and the budget, we have plenty of money in this city, we don't need more money from alcohol revenue. So, I'm asking you to please, don't liberalize any of the policies, I think you're doing a good job in, so far, so don't make a good thing worse. Okay, thank you.
The next speaker is Andrew Doty, to be followed by Julie No.
Good morning, and thanks for the opportunity, appreciate it. Introduce myself, my name is Andrew Doty, and for the past eight years, I've been the owner and operator of the Old Town Blues Club. The name of the business is Lucky Stone Irish Pub LLC, but we do business as the Old Town Blues Club. Been doing business there since late 2015, on the corner of Fourth and Front, you probably know the place. Love this community, love what we do, and we believe that the Old Town Blues Club provides something that nobody else does for 60, 75 miles in any direction, and we're told that regularly, that we bring actually culture and arts to the town. We're a live music venue first and foremost, we're not a bar, not a nightclub, not a restaurant, just ask the people who come to our place and ask for food, you know, we're not in the food business, we're a live music venue. First to last year, legislation was written by the state of California, emergency law for live music venues, just like myself, and created a type 90 live music venue license for alcohol, so we can actually compete with others and provide customers who prefer something other than maybe beer or wine. But if, you know, I've got a modified CUP in the works, and waiting for the Planning Commission next month to take a look at it, and if you haven't been by our club, you know, before you make your decision, come on down, see for yourself, you see what we're all about, there's, we're unique, we're good for Temecula. Ask our 15,000 followers, ask people to come by our place, we're well-behaved, we're good actors, they're bad actors, they're good actors, so don't pay, you know, everybody one brush, and punish those who are doing well and are great stewards for the community. I have responsible people working for me, we're all, everybody's IRSB certified, we have zero tolerance for bad behavior, and look within your own departments, talk to the heads of all your departments, you come by our place on a regular basis, and ask their opinions of what they think of Old Town Blues Club before you make your decision, because I'm confident that they will tell you that if anybody deserves the opportunity to serve alcohol maturely and professionally and respectfully, it's us. We realize it's a privilege, it is, it's a privilege to sell alcohol in this community, and we recognize that, we know that it's not something to be toyed with or taken lightly, because, like, I'm 63 years old, and the last thing I want to do, deal with, with is drunken idiots and people and stuff, and so we have zero tolerance for it. Come into our place, my average customer is, the average age is 50 to 56 years old, mostly female, and they come there because it's a safe place to come, it's a safe place to come, I reiterate that, they'll tell you themselves. Just look at our, our Facebook demographics, 50 to 56-year-old women come there because they feel comfortable and safe, it's a place they can come and listen to some entertainment. You know, I know that the city likes to be arching culture, well, we're just a, a private example of what the Old Town Community Center is, you do theater and music over there, we provide entertainment, I bring entertainment from all over the world in my club, we bring a top-name acts on times when we can afford it. But my objective is always to, you know, to have a legacy, that I'm all done with this, to leave something that puts a name on Temecula for bringing arts and culture to the community. So, we're good for Temecula, so when it comes time to the Planning Commission to look at our CUP for the type 9, we hope you look favorable at it. Thank you so much.
And then the last speaker is Julie No.
Hi, good morning, everyone, Julie No, representing the Old Town Temecula Association. Just want to say thank you to the City Council and the Planning Commission and staff for holding these forums for us, because it gets a lot of our businesses out to talk to you about what we consider our heartbeat of, of, of the city, which is Old Town Temecula. We appreciate that you do this, and that you also meet our restaurants twice a year, just to really give us, give them some insight on what's been, you know, what's happening in the city. We are excited to host many of you guys on a tour of Old Town through our eyes, I know you'll be visiting some of the restaurants and some of the, the shops that are in town, because I think we forget there are shops and services in town too. And Andy, thank you, great words, so thank you so much.
Thank you. All right, so, and I do want to kind of start it off, because what we're talking about here is the, basically the type 90, we're not talking about liberalization of alcohol in Old Town, or extending hours of any CUPs in Old Town, this is strictly a discussion on, do we want a type 90, and do we, how many do we want? What, what is that going to look like? And so, and based on, you know, just listening to Andy's talk, speech, that's literally what we're doing here, we're, we're offering a business, an opportunity to be financially viable, and bring arts and culture to our community in, in different forms, and this is, and this one is music. Music is a very important part of Old Town, as far as I'm concerned, what I see in Old Town. And so, I just remember back in the days, we used to do hot summer nights, where the city would actually pay for concerts all over Old Town, and I used to come down here, and it was fantastic, I mean, the- I mean, the, the music was everywhere. It was just a really, really cool vibe. Now, we don't do that anymore, but we do concerts in the park and, and they're going to be at City Hall this next summer. But, so that's what we're discussing. We're discussing this Type 90. Do we want it? It's not, we're not extending anybody's hours, we're not adding anything. We're just, we're just looking at a music venue opportunity, basically, for a business like a, well, a, any music venue business. So let's go ahead and let's start with planning commission first.
Mr. Mayor, if I could say one thing?
Yeah.
Appreciate all those comments. We haven't got to the Type 90 portion of the discussion yet. We're still on the COAs. So that's coming next. The Type 90s is coming next.
Okay.
Yeah, that, that whole portion of the discussion is, is the next section.
Got it.
This is just the standard conditions of approval.
Luke, maybe we could go to the slide and leave it up, with all listed, all the COAs, yeah, for conversation.
Yeah, there you go.
I do have a question. Not about Type 90s, but, so I know that in the past, we've had a requirement for, in order to have the Type 47 license, that there has to be food served. How does that, so that's, I guess, then I'm getting into Type 90. So that's what's different about Type 90, correct?
Well, these are just for CUPs. So we're getting a little ahead of ourselves talking about Type 90s. Type 90s is a completely different approval structure.
Right.
And it's going to be proposed and not even require a CUP. So this is about.
Okay, so on this, though, food is required, correct?
Yes, you can see there are meals. So that is into, that's a, a section of the conditional, conditions of approval that are standard, that we would require. And for some, it depends on what type of CUP you're going for. But if you are a restaurant, that you would be required to have meal service up to a specific time
Correct.
of your hours of operation.
Okay, thanks. Also, can you kind of be more specific on the morphing too? Like, what do you mean about that, like, exactly?
Yeah, that's, that's really simple. It's not specific to any type of business. What it means is that if you come in to get a condition of approval and you, you get one, and it's for, let's say, a restaurant, then you have to operate as a restaurant. You can't operate as a restaurant until 10:00 PM. And then on Thursday, Friday, Saturday, you clear all the tables out and you become a nightclub. Obviously, that was the issue we were seeing. You're not approved to be a nightclub. You don't have a nightclub ABC license, let alone a CUP from the city for a nightclub. And that's just one example. So that's what morphing is. And that's, we've seen, we've had a lot of issues with that in Old Town.
Do we have, I mean, are there places that are nightclubs? Like, that's what they have a CUP for? That I'm, I'm not aware of that.
We have one, it's a Type 48.
Oh, that one that you, yeah. Okay.
Can I interject for one quick second? Not to break it up, but I just got done talking to the mayor. And I think we might be kind of lost as far as the direction of where, I know, I understand that there's different sections that we're taking. If you can just get a little more specific, Luke, on exactly what we're after and what we're supposed to exactly be discussing for this question, maybe going back to the original, that would be helpful.
So, let's go all the way back here.
Thank you, sir.
This is the direction that was provided to, to staff at the last meeting. And there's three sections. We were just discussing the first section, which is standard conditions of approval for CUPs. And, and that's it. And then the second section, which we haven't gotten to yet, is a discussion about specifically Type 90s and a policy framework for potentially allowing Type 90s. And then the third and final section would be a discussion revisiting outdoor live entertainment. So currently, and I'll go back to it, we're just on number one there, which is just COAs. Apologize if there's any confusion with that.
So what you're just trying to ask for, so we're, we're clear here is, for direction, is you're trying to find out of these different areas of the COAs, you are looking for any other direction or any changes?
Yes, so, these are broad categories of COAs. The, the, the packet of actual COAs that we put together is long, because they include definitions in more detail. We are looking for direction to move that into an ordinance, come back to the planning commission with the details, and then to the city council for full consideration of public hearing, to put these in the code as standard conditions of approval. So I, if I went through all of them and all their definitions, it would, this presentation would be very long. These are the categories of conditions of approval we're looking to make standard and put into the code.
Luke, is it, is it fair to say that the list that we're looking at there on the screen does not currently exist in today's environment? But they're, they're items that we have heard or that we've realized are important to this consideration and are asking the PC and the, and the city council to consider making this list and the details that go with this list codified into future local laws, is that?
Many of these are already in play in CUPs. Many of them are new. The idea here is to establish a standard set, so we don't have a bunch of different rules for different CUPs in the future. So we're taking things that we already use and things that are newly developed based on our experience. We're putting them into one standard list, and then we'll present that to you to be placed into the code. So when, so when a business comes to us and wants a new CUP, these items won't be negotiated. They'll be standard.
Right.
There may be other items that need to get negotiated, because all businesses are different. But at least we'll have a very standard set that all new CUPs going into the future will have. And they're, you know, including these types of categories.
Okay. I think Zach wanted to.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, I can, I just wanted to kick off this sort of portion of it, we got a little squirrely there. But Luke, thank you for the presentation and, and really for facilitating a follow-up to that first meeting. When we talk about standardizing these conditions of approval, I'm, I'm pretty much on board with everything I see. I think there's a lot of good stuff in here that will be beneficial to the overall environment of Old Town, especially in the evenings. One thing, and really the one thing that, that just jumps out at me that I struggle with and I have a problem with is the, is shutting off, you know, the, the time of service, right? Like, when we talk about closing down at midnight and we have CUPs currently that are allowed to go to, to 2:00 AM. And then sort of having that conversation of saying, like, hey, anything new is going to roll back to, to midnight. I think that creates a couple of problems. If someone wants to, to change their CUP, maybe they want to enhance it in some way, then they're going to have to sort of take that, take their medicine a little bit, right? They might have to roll back to midnight if they wanted to change. I, I think it creates an environment where you have different places that are, you know, open till midnight and then some that are open till, till 2:00, creating like an unfair sort of advantage, I guess, in some ways for those restaurants or for those businesses or other that are open till 2:00. So I, so I really struggle with that. I think streamlining, laying it till midnight would be appropriate and, or, I'm sorry, till 2:00 AM would be more appropriate, so that everything would, would be 2:00 versus some at midnight unless they want it, and then some at 2:00. It just seems reasonable to me that we should go till 2:00 AM. But everything else on this, I, I love, like, everything else that's going on in here of standardizing them. I think it's going to elevate the experience in Old Town for sure. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Brendan?
That was the one note I had as well. I think, like Councilmember Swank said, with some being grandfathered in until 2:00 AM, I think the standard should be 2:00 AM. And then on a case-by-case basis, we could always lower that. But the standard being across the board, 2:00 AM since 15 already had their CUP at 2:00 AM, would make sense. So that was the one note I had as well. I would like to see the time of service for CUPs in the future ending at 2:00 AM instead of midnight. Thank you.
All right. Jessica?
All right, thank you, Mayor. So just going along with what the other two council members were saying, as far as within that category, I have to say that I would disagree because of the fact that we're just leaving more opportunity for more drinking for later hours. So if we're already seeing our numbers, if we can go back to the DUI schedule, please? Right there. So we're already seeing prob, probably about a hundred and fifty, I would say, I'm just going to average it out, about a hundred and fifty DUIs just between that, that timeframe of three hours. And if we're now going to push it even further, we're going to have more DUIs and it's going to go later into the evening. Because by the time now we clear out the bars, it's going to run into the 2:00 or the 3:00 o'clock hour. Typically, we're finding that right about, if I remember, I've gone out at about 1:00 or 2:00 in the morning. The 2:00, they're doing a lot of DUI checks, and that's where they're doing a lot of arrests as well. So I just think it's just going to continue to just morph us into something bigger. And the question is, is that what we want for our city? Do we want this to be more of a drinking fest? So the other thing I want to talk about is how do we differentiate between the two types of bars, right? So one that closes at midnight and one at 2:00. And I understand that that's, that's challenging. Well, couldn't we just put out something very simple as for the outside, for the sheriff's department, whoever is inspecting or code enforcement, that there could be a sticker or some type saying, this is the type of license? Or I think we already have something out there, is that correct, right now, that indicates the type of license when they walk in? Do you guys have a type of license, like, that indicates in the front of the door what type of establishment it is? Or what type?
I don't believe so, no.
Okay, so if I can walk in and say, hey, listen, here's a sticker, it shows this place that has this type of license, it closes at midnight. I just can't see that we are just going to continue to open up for more hours, more bars, more drinking. So that's kind of my thought.
All right, Bob, oh, go ahead, yeah.
I don't think it's the license type that's the issue. I think it's the CUP. Yeah, okay, yeah. Yeah, that's right, yeah. Overall, I, I agree. I, I don't, I don't see us going past midnight. I think, I think we're just asking for more problems. If you look at that chart, it basically says midnight is when the real bad stuff starts. So, but what I did also want to say is, I think there's some other benefits of having standards. One is I think it makes it easy for business to come in and make an application and, and apply for a CUP. Because I think all these are basic things. It takes stuff off the table that has to be discussed. It might actually shorten the process of, of going before the planning commission to get approval. And I think the other thing this does is, I think it's fair to the businesses that we've struggled to standardize things in the past because of the CUP process, because it goes with the land. You, you know, I think there's a feeling out there with some of our businesses that it's unfair. And, you know, I think part of what we're trying to do is to bring fairness to, to this. And we can't go back, but we can certainly, you know, create a standard to go forward with. And I think that having these standards make it fair for all businesses, they all have to, have to abide by it.
Commissioner Trejo?
So I, we didn't really get to hear from the sheriff's department last time. And I think that you maybe could shed a light. I mean, we have the statistics, but maybe you can give us a little more feel of what it looks like in Old Town between 12:00 and 2:00, 12:00 and 4:00? Because I, I feel like last time, we decided to close at midnight. That was a decision. So I don't know why we're going back to that. But can you maybe shed some light on that for us and for the audience?
First, before I answer your question, my, my job and my role in this is, is not to choose a side. I personally don't care if you run to midnight or run to 2:00. My job, though, is to explain to you the cause and effect of what the deputies are seeing. And so ultimately, the data simply shows this. The longer people have been drinking, the more problems we have. And that's just a fact. Are there lots of good people down here between midnight and 2:00 that are not causing a problem? Absolutely. That are getting home safely, absolutely. But then there's also problems. And that's what we're here to talk about, is the vision of Old Town and what city council, this committee, the business owners, what's the, what's the, the happy balance of that? So I can simply tell you, in my 24 years of being a deputy for Riverside Sheriff's Department, and it's not just isolated Old Town, things after midnight happen with alcohol consumption. And so if it is the, if it is the desire of city council and the planning commission to go to 2:00, then I, I will be asking the city manager for additional resources. Because not only do I want the residents safe, I also have a moral and ethical obligation to make sure the deputies are safe as well. And they're in lots of fights on a Friday and Saturday night. Alcohol, I, I have fought more people under the influence of alcohol than anything else on the planet, and I've been assigned dope. It's just, we all have that friend. We all know that person that can't control their alcohol. When we have that friend, it's like, it's time to go home. Right? Alcohol makes good people do really stupid things in excess. So, but I don't want to blanket that for everyone, because I'm sure there are many people in this room that like an occasional sippy when they go home, right? To take the edge off. And that's okay. But ultimately, to answer your question, Lanay, the longer the hours are, the more alcohol consumption. If the more bars are open at 2:00 in the morning, that brings more people into Old Town. Which is a good thing, but if they're consuming alcohol, there will be a problem element with that, that I will need to be prepared for.
Thank you. Also, and I know as planning commissioners, we, we represent citizens in the city also. And I know it's been a concern of constituents of mine of what Old Town is becoming. And I think whatever we can do to kind of bring that tide back, you know, of being pro-business, but also being safe. Like, it's really all about public safety. And even the two people that passed away from DUI, like, if, if that was my person, right? That means a lot. It means a lot that it's somebody in our city. And so I think that we really have to take that into consideration here with the decision that we're making today about those conditions of approval. And I also agree with my colleague here, Bob, about having things standardized. And I know that it's confusing for some people that are open at midnight, some people are open at, to 2:00, but that's just how it is. And now, going forward, we have to do better. And I think that's okay. That's okay for us to do better. And I think that is better. For us to be closed at midnight is better than what it's been before. From what we've seen coming to planning commission, oh, yeah, for sure. So I really think we got to look at that today.
Thanks. So a couple of questions before comments. On the second page of the proposed standard conditions of approval, it says discount alcohol pricing. Can you elaborate on what that is?
Yeah, that, that really has to do with happy hours. To say that happy hours can't go till 2:00 AM, they have to end it by a specific time at night.
Got it. So it's not, it's not taking happy hours, like, like a certain hour for you?
No, no, that's just saying you can't have discount all the way through till 2:00 AM.
Okay. And then, I think I may have asked this last time, but just kind of looking at some clarification. I know we're discussing primarily Old Town here, but one of the earlier sites did, you know, take into consideration thought processes for Uptown Jefferson and everything else that we've got proposed in the city. I'm, I'm a little torn, to be honest, about the 2:00 and 12:00 o'clock because of the regularity of everything. Is there a possibility to say Old Town has one closing time and elsewhere would have something different? Is that a possibility?
It is a possibility.
Okay, just consideration, maybe I'll come back to that, come back to that later. And I guess the other thing that I would ask again, or maybe some clarification, Lanay had touched on it a little bit earlier. A policy or conditions of approval are only as good as its enforcement, at the end of the day. I mean, we can come up with any list that we want if it's not being enforced. I also believe that we've probably have, very broad statement here, but we probably have a few bad actors that are causing the damage and affecting a majority of the other good actors because of that. I look at some of these policy things and, you know, hear the concerns for public safety and all of that. But, for example, if over-serving is an issue, or some of these other things are an issues, if we can tighten up enforcement, why, why would we not be able to do that? And if our hands are tied for certain things because of state laws, if we could maybe kind of expand out on that. But not that we want to sit here and revoke CUPs by any means, but it's, it seems like it's a very slow-moving, very lightly-handed enforcement process, where if we could tighten that enforcement process up, then the culture down here becomes, hey, Temecula's going to let you have a good time, there's going to be rules, there's going to be enforcement. And if you break those rules, you're going to be dealt with. But we want to keep this safe for everybody while still allowing people to experience the type of entertainment that they're looking for. So could, could you, or, or maybe the captain, well, I guess maybe it's CUP enforcement, what, 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 what do we have? What tools do we have or does the city have to enforce these? If someone's over-serving, do they just, how many letters do they get before something actually starts sinking into the business? Can you expand on that a little bit, please?
Yeah, I, I would have to say, I, I disagree a little bit with you that there hasn't been enforcement. I think that's been the hallmark of the last three years, since 2020, with the establishment of the Metro Team, with bringing them on. of the Metro team, with bringing them on as Metro Plus, we now have Metro Team dedicated to Old Town, we have fire code and building out in enforcing every single week, every single weekend. The level of compliance that we've seen since 2020 to now is night and day. Now, so that's, that's on the enforcement side. I think that dramatic steps have been taken by the city and enforcement has improved dramatically. And I think the folks behind you would probably agree with that. Sometimes, to their dismay. So that's, that's what I think about enforcement. Now, in terms of CUPs, that's the rub with CUPs. CUPs are difficult to revoke. If there are problems, there's going to be a long process, it's by design, that there's a long process to either gain compliance or revoke it through litigation. There's no way around it. That's why we established the entertainment license, which gives the city more control over entertainment, separates it from alcohol. So I believe there's been a number of things, and I presented in the last meeting all of those things that we've, we've done, I think there was 12 or 13 of them. Specifically, we've changed the code. These conditions of approval, yes, they, they need to be enforced, but we've learned lessons, and I think some of these new conditions of approval are based on those lessons. And we think that they will, them being intact, as, as standard condition approvals, will actually help us to be able to enforce. We found the holes where we could have used things like this to maybe stop something before it started, or to wrap something up once it had begun. So I think that's really what these are about. So I, I, I think that a lot has been done. This is just, standard conditions of approval is just one of many things that the city has done since 2020.
Yeah, and I don't want to discount, because I would agree, and I appreciate the efforts the city's made in the Metro Team, and I definitely don't want to discount any of that. When I, when I was speaking of enforcement, I'm saying if we know that there's a problem that someone continually over-serves, serves late, like, they're, they're breaking the rules of the CUP that's been put in place, and you kind of touched on it there, our, our hands are tied, it's a lot more difficult for, for some of those, or?
Well, they're going to be, they're going to receive fines, they're going to receive notice of violation, they're going to receive fines, they're going to be turned over to ABC if they're doing something illegal, the RSO is going to do their thing. You know, the, the difference is, is now all of that structure is in place to enact it immediately. So if something is seen, the process begins immediately, and it begins in earnest. As before, it wasn't, it wasn't like that. So it was, it was a little bit more disjointed, code was doing their thing, RSO was doing their thing, but now we're consolidated, and we move quickly. That's the difference.
Okay. I guess sticking on this, that'd be the only other, I mean, that, that should be a big key point for me, is I, I love standardizing things. Again, I'm still, I know we kind of talked about the whole midnight thing, but hearing businesses that are open, you're just going to, my opinion, someone that wants to be out, they're going to leave the 12 o'clock business and run over to the two o'clock business. I don't know that that changes a whole ton of things. I love the standardization. Just being a policy person myself, policy's only as good as enforcement, and we've got to make sure that there's some sort of teeth or rules that we can, that we can hold people accountable to, so.
Mr. Mayor, can you make one more comment real quick?
Just that last part about the 12 o'clock running over to the two o'clock, yeah, I think that would absolutely happen. But I, I think just for full disclosure, we're, we're talking about conditions for new CUPs going forward, but if the direction is to allow for 2:00 AM for new ones, you just have to know that all the existing that don't have 2:00 AM will be in to get 2:00 AM. So you eventually will have, over time, all CUPs that allow for alcohol will be 2:00 AM. It's just, just need to understand that.
But if, but if that were the case, they would have to come back for application, stuff could be, again, reviewed and everything as well, correct?
They could. But it would be very difficult to say no to them, unless they were violating. If they were violating, and they came in and they're 12 o'clock, and the new policy is to move to 2:00 AM, what justification do staff or planning commissioner, city council have to say no? You can, I'm just saying, it makes it much more difficult. You're going to have to have some problem with that business to be able to say no.
No, I understand that, I just was saying, that's an opportunity that if someone has been stepping or working outside the box, that, that, it wouldn't be guaranteed, someone's not guaranteed, I guess, not that way, someone's not guaranteed.
Not guaranteed.
If this were to be expanded, that they could get that.
But I think you have to remember that the CUP is not for the businesses, it's for the property. So it, you know, the business could be a great business, it's going to behave themselves, and it could be the one after that, that's the problem, so.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. I did have one question, I tried to review it. The responsibility for cost, can you discuss that a little bit?
Which one, we're looking at here?
I think it's the next, the next slide, or the one before that. The responsibility of a cost incurred all the way to the bottom?
That's if, you know, there's a, a, a major police response, or a major fire response, due to them violating their CUP, they'd be responsible for the cost.
So the business is responsible?
They would have to be violating their CUP, but if there was a, a major city expense because of the violation, they would be responsible for the cost.
That sounds great, putting the businesses accountable for their actions. I, I can agree that 2:00 AM closing time would be fair, and I think 2:00 AM is okay. From my experience, you know, visiting Old Town, it's extremely safe, and they're, the majority of the businesses are, I don't know, I can't point out there's any bad businesses there, that are being bad actors, but I believe that most of the businesses do follow, do follow the law. And also, these new conditions of approval give the city an edge. If we do need to enforce, or if we do need to give the businesses on notice that something's happening, that, that we, we have that ability with these new conditions of approval. And also, if 12:00 AM and 2:00 AM is still, you know, for not suring on, on what time we should give these new CUPs, is there a possibility to give these new CUPs maybe a, a five-year operation at maybe 2:00 AM? And then within the five years, that business can come back, and we could see if, if 2:00 AM works, and, and then if it doesn't, then their CUP expires, or?
Yeah, I can address that right away. So there, these are permanent land use entitlements, so there cannot be any expiration date on the conditions of approval or the status of the CUP unless we move to revoke it. So it's important to know that, and that's kind of one of the main points here, is that when a CUP is issued, it's permanent, and it cannot sunset, it cannot have a sunset provision.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Watts?
Yes. Captain, I don't want to catch you by surprise, I'll give you a minute to, to catch your thoughts here, though. But back in, when, ancient times, when I was in law enforcement, freeways generally were enforced, or DUIs on freeways were generally enforced by CHP. If we stopped somebody, we'd usually turn it over, vice versa, if they were in the park or in the city. So I assume that that may or may not have been included in your total for the DUIs?
They were not, sir. All of those are deputies assigned to Temecula inside city limits. I'll have, I'll have you know, though, that my traffic team reached out to the city of Marietta, and on Jefferson, north out of Old Town into city limits of Marietta, the city of Marietta in 2023 had 25 DUI arrests on Jefferson and four DUI traffic collisions from patrons visiting Old Town heading north into Marietta.
That's the point I was after, and I suppose it's safe to say there was, I think there was 363 DUI arrests, or something to that number?
367, sir.
Okay, so that's roughly one a day in the city. If 367 were caught, I'm assuming there'd be a significant increase in number that weren't caught, that got away drunk driving, probably.
I, I would reasonably assume that they didn't catch everybody.
And for the, for the benefit of everyone that doesn't know, as I said, back, back in the ancient days, making a stop for a drunk driver was just the beginning of your night or your day. You had to make the arrest, do all the field sobriety tests, go, go for blood or, or alcohol, or breath, whatever, then you had to take them to booking and book them, then you had to go back and write a report that might be two, three, four, five hours, maybe longer if there was injuries or something of that nature. And then, if there was any court action, you were looking at going into court on overtime because you're not scheduled to go into court to defend those, those types of things. Is that safe to say that there's a significant, I don't want to catch you by surprise, but just roughly off the top of your head, how many hours do you think a deputy spends when a drunk driving arrest is initiated?
I would, I would say probably three to four at the minimum, as long as there's no injuries and they're clear for booking. There's medical screening in the booking process before an arrestee enters into our jail, and if someone gets flagged for an elevated heart rate, high blood pressure, then that arrestee is taken for what's called an okay to book. So probably on average, it's safe to say three to four hours.
So it's safe to say, then, anytime the drunk driving is arrested, and you're taking a deputy off patrol, and he'll be tied, he or she will be tied up with, with that process?
That's correct. We also, one of, what did Deputy Ortiz get last year? I think Deputy Ortiz, who's assigned to the Metro here, I think he alone had 123 of those DUI arrests.
Wow.
He led, he led the station in DUI arrests assigned to the Metro Team.
Well, my point in is, what you said earlier about your needs as, as the chief, I assume you would be coming back if we were going to open up a lot more till 2:00 AM in the morning, and judging by the statistics, what happens from midnight to two in the morning, you're going to have a significant impact on your staffing operation and the cost of that, is that safe to say?
That is correct. If more businesses are open longer, more people will come, more people will consume alcohol, and not all of them are going to be bad actors. Some of them are going to be good people, but that increased volume of people will increase calls for service in DUIs during that time. It's, it's, it's a fact.
Thank you very much for your, your opinions on those, that's, that's very helpful. Getting back to this, Luke, I'm just curious, if I was a business owner, what exactly, and I, you probably don't have the details yet, but a banned customer log, a cutoff log, a headcount log, I assume that would all be up to the business owner as to how they accomplish that, and to what ends would that be used for? Would they be audited? Would they be daily? Would they be purged? Something that, I don't expect you to have all these answers right now, but I could see some significant concerns on the business community with those types of standard conditions. So I would just ask if, if you think that that's a realistic take?
I think it's realistic, we haven't gotten that far yet in terms of the details. I think that is intended to help law enforcement understand who was cut off and where. If there's an incident, they can trace their, their whereabouts throughout Old Town and say, hey, you were cut off here, and then you continued over here. And it also leads to, well, they were cut off here, but then they were still served over here, so there's information that can be gleaned from those kinds of record-keeping, how long they keep it, and exactly how often it's available to law enforcement, we haven't, we haven't got that far yet. That'll all come out, if we move forward, that'll all come out in the specifics of the ordinance that gets drafted and presented to the planning commission and city council.
Okay. And then my final comment, judging on my inter, interaction with the chief over there, we already have 15 establishments in Old Town that are open till two o'clock. You could see what the correlation between 12 to two and 16 places that have that ability to serve alcohol after midnight. If we were to increase that, you can just imagine that the workload is going to go up, and the numbers are going to go up, and probably the bad things are going to happen, and hopefully not anybody gets killed by one of these crazies that are drunk and driving. Anyhow, those are my thoughts, thank you very much for giving me the opportunity.
Want to follow up?
Just one thing, and I think we didn't really talk about is, but I think you mentioned at the beginning, Luke, of kind of going forward with Jefferson, Uptown, too, right? And I think that we have to think about that, you know, and I think that's what I've found the most frustrating, honestly, being on planning commission, is that if we come up with a decision, that decision goes for everybody, right? And we open that box. If we don't open that box, we're not having to try to close it. And I think with Jefferson also, and I'm also on that subcommittee, is making those kind of decisions that we make today will affect the decisions we make in Jefferson, Uptown, which is going to be a whole different kind of community that we haven't really done in the past, having kind of an urban community, which I think is great. But I think we have to think about that with decisions that we make today, not just Old Town, but the rest of the city. And Old Town is what we're focusing on, that is a big focus. And also, just reiterating, the other hard thing is that CUP. Like, I just, like, oh yeah, you're a good player, we'll give you what you want. But we, we are giving whoever what they want, not just that good player. And we really have to think about that with the CUP and the decisions that we make with this. Thank you.
Councilmember Swain.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've really enjoyed this discussion, I think it's healthy. One of the things that I keep going back to, and we have these conversations, like, when we talk about like our Q LMP, or you talk about, you know, what does Temecula look like? And one of the things that we consistently hear is, like, well, the, the younger folks, they're leaving, and they're not coming back, you know? And why is that? Because they don't feel like this is a vibrant, you know, enjoyable place to be, and they're seeking that out. So when we're talking about some of this stuff, I, I just want us to be mindful of that, as, as well as, you know, we can talk about, you know, the negatives of everything, we could also think about the positives and look at, regionally, tourism is a billion-dollar industry here in our, our area. Anecdotally, when I was down at the, the skating rink over the holidays, I ran into a woman who was here with her family from Plano, Texas, and she was like, this is amazing. We don't have this sort of thing in my city, and we're here for a couple of weeks, and, you know, we're, we're over at Pachanga, we're out in wine country, we're hanging out in Old Town, eating, drinking, like, this is amazing. So we can also think about that. Some of the, the things that, and I'm hopeful that Old Town, the Old Town Local Advisory Committee, I got that name right, is going to tackle, is we currently don't allow overnight parking. There's an incentive to drive your car out of here at night, even if you've been drinking. So maybe that's a, a conversation that we have to have about, about that. So if we're going to talk about DUIs and, and things like that, well, we might be responsible for some of those, just because we don't allow overnight parking. So I think it's important for us to put guardrails on this, and then the enforcement side, like Commissioner Reeves mentioned, it is important that we have enforcement, and that's what we're tasked to do. We can come up with a vision for our area. Right now, 15 CUPs approved past midnight, and, and I don't know that, you know, exponentially in the next year or so, that's going to be, you know, problematic if everybody goes to 2:00 AM, it's, I don't know what that looks like going forward, you know, especially once Uptown Jefferson's built out, you know, the Altaire development, we're going to have homes here, people are walking down here. I have neighbors that absolutely love, we live within walking distance of Old Town, that absolutely love walking down here on a Friday night, because they can stay out late, their kids are all gone, they're empty nesters, they're like, hey, we like to drink, and go listen to music and have a good old time. So I, I just think we need to, to, you know, sort of be mindful of everything, like, all the aspects of all of this. So there's a lot that we can sort of chew on, and, and I think just, you know, our region, we didn't need to have this conversation 20 years ago even, right? Because there wasn't much to do here, it was like, oh, go to Rosa's after, Friday night after work, and everything closed at eight o'clock, and everybody went home. But we are a vibrant destination now, and I think that's exciting. I'm just not so pessimistic on the, on the 2:00 AM doom and gloom stuff. Thank you.
All right, well, I'll give you my two cents. I am glad we're having this discussion, because considering the last time we did it was 2010, that was 14 years ago, and Old Town has changed a lot in 14 years. So a lot of these things that we want to bring up in this new standard of, of conditions of standards, we didn't really think of or even need. And so I also, I'm, I'm not in favor of extending to 2:00 AM only for one reason, and that is that a midnight closing will, will give people incentive to go home. And so the sooner we can get as many people out of Old Town, you know, who have been drinking, the better. And so that's why I, I'm in favor of keeping it just the way it is, where you have grandfathered in, we have grandfathered in, uh, uh, conditions everywhere. I mean, every city has it, so I, I don't see a problem with that, as far as, you know, certain ones have that ability and other ones don't, it's just the way it is, you know, it's, so I, I don't see an issue with that, and, and if we can give anybody who's been drinking, anybody who knows about drinking, you're actually more drunk an hour later after you stop drinking. And so it's, it's like, you know, there's, we need to have these people have a, a reason to go home. And so for those, and, and those, those people will, the ones who want to keep drinking, they're going to roll over to the 2:00 AM one, you know, so be it. But I think by keeping, you know, it midnight, I think that's a- one, you know, so be it. But I think by keeping, you know, it midnight, I think that's a, that's a safer, better option. And even talking further, you know, as far as Uptown is concerned, same thing. I mean, how many, how many places do we want people drinking till 2:00 AM in the city of Temecula? And so, you know, I, I personally am in favor of keeping it just the way it is. The grandfathered in, 12:00 would be the standard cutoff time. You know, and, and frankly, most, every single one of these CUPs are restaurants and how many people are eating dinner at midnight or 1:00? Nobody. So essentially, it's a bar at that point. So, and we don't have bar permits. So, so that's my thought. I'm, I'm totally okay with leaving it just the way it is as far as the 12:00. I do like the morphing category because that's something I think a new CUP applicant needs to know that they really don't have the right to morph it. That's not what the CUP is conditioned for. So, um, and I like the right to cancel also because that gives, and the responsibility to cost incurred because that, that's going to put the responsibility back on the CUP holder and that things, if they get out of hand, they're going to be financially liable for that. So, um, so that's my thought.
So where do we?
Oh.
No.
Just question for Luke real quick, changing from hours because I know we've kind of beat that, that horse a little bit. Just out of curiosity, looking at fines, right? So currently, I believe if somebody stays past their time, let's say they're supposed to close at 12:00, they get a $1,000 fine, and if they continue to stay open, they only receive $1,000. Is that correct?
Well, the, the fine schedule is, those are civil penalties. Those are different. So it's 50, 150, 250. So you get a notice of violation and then we go 50 for the next occurrence, 150, 250. That's the fine schedule. Now, if that doesn't gain compliance, then we move to civil penalties and civil penalties are $1,000 per violation per day. And that's the maximum allowed by law.
Okay. So we have no control over as far as how much, once they hit that side of the penalty, to, to raise that bar?
Yeah. My understanding is $1,000 a day per violation, maximum $1,000 a day. So you can't have like 10 different violations and do $10,000. That, that's my understanding of, of the limit that we have available to us, which is also one of the main reasons it's been difficult because some, a lot of times $1,000 a day is not a big enough hammer. It's just cost of doing business for some of these businesses and they don't, it doesn't change behavior.
Exactly. And that's kind of where I was hitting at. So is there anything as far as a city or as far as a city council, anything in our hands to be able to find them in other ways to, does that make sense?
I don't think so. I can't answer that, you know, with 100% assurance. It's something we'd have to work with the city attorney's office on and find out if there are other avenues. I can tell you that we looked for other avenues over the last few years and there hasn't been any available to us. But we can certainly take a look again, see if things have changed and new laws every year. But it's, to my knowledge today, that is the limitation.
Okay.
And councilmember, that, that's kind of my recollection too, that we explored if we could be more punitive, you know, is what I'm hearing. And Peter, or Mari Sella, I know you're on the line, if you feel comfortable just addressing the councilmember's question about can we increase locally the fines associated with, with these penalties and, but my understanding was we are at the max on a daily. Peter?
Yes, that's correct. We have worked very hard over the last couple of years to try and figure out if we could increase the fines, but we're really, we're really at the max with that.
Have we ever brought it to legislation to see if we can get that to higher?
Not to my knowledge.
Yeah, not the city. Yeah.
Is that something maybe we can look at? Maybe connecting with Kate Sanchez or Kelly Ciardo to be able to maybe put that in as issues that weren't having and obviously I'm sure other cities are having the same problems to increase those fines?
We can add it to our list of visits and conversation.
That'd be great. Thank you.
All right. Councilmember Calphus, you have a follow up?
I feel like the main word that we're all thinking about is balance. The balance between public safety, family friendly and business friendly. And like we've said, and we've beaten it pretty good, is there's, there's still going to be those 15 businesses with their CUPs that go to 2:00 AM. And the reality to me is that those DUI numbers may not change. Say we did a midnight from here going forward, those DUI numbers could stay the same, they could decrease or they could increase. In my mind is the DUIs will always happen. People are always going to drink and drive. We can have as much enforcement as we want and the hope is, is that the, the consequences for getting a DUI result in less DUIs for that individual in the future, right? Where we're trying to use the legal arm to deter certain behaviors. And with this, it's, it reminds me of the, the, Major League Baseball put in a seventh inning, a lot of teams put in a seventh inning cutoff clause. Hey, we don't want people drinking and driving. What that, what they realized and teams have revoked that is because they, they thought, hey, if we, if we end the drinking earlier, there will be less people that get in their cars and drive and drink and drive after the games. What that caused is they caused more individuals to drink more in a shorter period of time and there were still the same amount, if not more DUIs, even though they, they cut the consumption earlier. So a lot of teams have reverted back to, there is no, there's no time limit on the innings you can drink. And for every policy that we implement, we don't know the, the final results of that policy until it actually is implemented. But like I said, I feel like if we stopped it at midnight going forward, we will always have those 15 that are grandfathered in and we will always have DUIs after 2:00 AM between the hours of midnight and four and five. And if, even if every business, if there was a way to not grandfather and every business in Old Town and Uptown closed at midnight, we would still have DUIs, they could just become earlier on in the night or people, you know, the, the drinking and driving will always be a thing. And every argument to not serve alcohol or to end the alcohol sales early is a great argument for prohibition. And I think the United States tried that once and we know that that was unsuccessful. So that is the, when I think about that, it's like, oh, there should be no drinking at all. That would solve so many problems. But what we have at our disposal is enforcement. And I agree with Luke where we have done a great job enforcing these things and we will continue to do a great job enforcing this. And moving forward to me, again, I will reiterate that like councilmember Swain said, we have to take in all aspects of consideration. There will always be a minimum of 15 CUPs that have that 2:00 AM time. I, I do disagree that. I don't think if, if the blanket statement across the board was 2:00 AM, I forget who said it, that every business that has a CUP would opt for 2:00 AM because not every business opts for a midnight closing time right now. Some have, they close at nine, 9:00 PM. But we have to take everything into consideration and our job as planning commission and city council is to find that balance between family friendly, business friendly and public safety. Thank you, Mayor.
All right. City manager.
Okay. Took some notes and I'll, I'll share what I think here and what I heard and Luke and Peter, I'll probably need your guidance as well as far as next steps because we still, we're only a third of the way through and, and we wanted to kind of leave with consensus if we could get it or direction so we could start drafting things and we got a bit of a timeline. On the positive front, what I, what I heard from the planning commission and the city council by and large is you guys are in support of these standard conditions of approval. So that's helpful and I think that we will take that direction and, and begin moving in that direction. Based on what I heard, you know, the planning commission opinion on 12:00 AM versus 2:00 AM was in 3-2 was in support of a, of a 12:00 AM stop. That's, that's what I had reflected in my notes. On the city council, I had a 2-2 based on the same scenario. Given that, and so to keep this process moving, and this does need to go to the planning commission first, and of course, we'll go from the planning commission to the city council, it would probably be my recommendation, Luke, Peter, that we begin drafting what we heard today. And it's probably should reflect the planning commission majority teed up for them. And then of course, it's going to go, it's going to have the public hearings, going to listen to the community. It'll get either edited, repackaged, remain the same. Then it'll get teed up for the city council at some point for ultimate decision. So Luke, I don't know if that jives or if you're comfortable with that approach, but for the purpose of moving this along, and I know folks in the audience want to see this kind of continue to move, so.
Yeah, I mean, that works, that works for, for us. If that's the direction the council wants to go, then we, we will do that. We'll move this all forward based on what's presented here today. It will be put into a, you know, an ordinance, so it will be fleshed out in great detail and be dealt with by the planning commission. And like city manager said, it'll be changed or not changed in, in any way they seem, they deem fit, and then it'll come to you for ultimate decision. So we are prepared to do that if that's the direction.
Mr. Mayor and council, is that, is that, are you all comfortable with that approach?
Yep.
Yep.
All right. Sounds good. Part two.
Okay. Here we go. Part two. All right. The second item today is the type 90 discussion. So just to reiterate, you know, there was a presentation on type 90s. It was new to us at the time. We had limited information, so we were directed to do more research. And then we were also directed to bring back a, a potential proposal for the planning commission and city council to chew on. This isn't, the, the proposal you'll see to allow for type 90s is not the only way to do it. It's just one way to do it that we put together so you can see an example and for you to discuss and change however you see fit. So the research, Senate Bill 793, which was approved in 2022, became effective January 1st, 2023, established, directed ABC to establish a new license type, type 90 for music entertainment facilities. The Business and Professional Code is where the rules for this license are located. It states that a music entertainment facility means a publicly or privately owned live performance venue, concert hall, auditorium or enclosed arena where music or entertainment events are presented for a price of admission. And that's a very important aspect of the license, that there has to be a, a ticket sold to get in. There was follow-up legislation that added some more to the type 90 and that, that it does not, the facility does not have to be exclusively for music or entertainment venues, which it seems kind of contradictory, but that's, that's the way it is. And what that means is like, so they could have a, they could have concerts there or they could have a wedding venue that's not open to the public and that doesn't require the sale of a ticket. The nuance there in the law is that they have, the, the facility has to have more live entertainment events in a year than they have of private, not open to the public events. So it, in a sense, it's a live entertainment facility and it's also a special event facility, a private special event facility. So a venue is not a music entertainment facility for the purposes of the article unless it satisfies the following criteria. It has to have a defined performance and audience space. The facility includes mixing equipment, public address system and a lighting rig. The facility employs one or more individuals to serve not less than two of the following roles. So you can see those there, a sound engineer, booker, promoter, stage manager, security personnel, box office managers, typical, typical jobs at a music venue. There is a paid ticket or cover charge to attend performance at the facility and artists, artists are paid and do not play for free or solely for tips, except for fundraisers and similar charitable events. Now, I, I highlighted the artists are, are paid and, and do not play for free because you'll remember one of the potential concerns that staff has was that any old business would morph into or try to get a type 90 and then have just music on a TV screen and then that would be considered live entertainment. No, there has to be a live artist and that artist has to be paid. And lastly, performances at the facility are marketed through listings and printed electronic publication and mass mailer and so on, social media. So what does a type 90 allow? It allows for live entertainment. It also allows for special events not open to the public. It's full liquor with, you know, distilled spirits. It does not require food service. That's a, that's a big difference. You can have food service, doesn't require it. It allows for minors and liquor, liquor under the type 90 is sold, I believe, two hours before the event and one hour after and during the event. That's what it's limited to. And I mentioned this a little bit, but in the previous presentation, there were kind of five areas of concern or that we needed a little bit more clarification on that we weren't, we weren't sure about. In the last meeting, these are the five. The first was, you know, these are really questions. The type 90 license seemed to be in direct conflict with the city council's goals of the entertainment license since the type 90 would be required to get a CUP to be valid and the entertainment license sought specifically to separate entertainment from the CUP process. So that was, seemed to be a contradiction for our policy framework. Second was the potential for restaurants to abandon food service en masse and become a bar with live entertainment. So that was, not saying that would happen, that was just a concern. What's to stop a, a type 47, which is a restaurant with liquor from seeking a type 90 and just getting rid of the food service altogether and becoming a bar? And if, if allowed, how many type 90s are permitted in Old Town? Question in the city? You know, that was a question we had. And so, and how does the proliferation of type 90s impact land use economics? And what I mean by that is, and we'll use an extreme example, I'm not saying this would happen, but say all the restaurants in Old Town converted to type 90s. And so now you have bars, essentially a bars that have live entertainment. That's going to change the land use economics, that's going to change rental rates, it's going to change land values. It was just a question. How does that work? What, what, what would this decision mean in terms of land use economics? And then of course, parking issues associated with special event facilities, which these really essentially are, they're special event facilities under a different name, particularly the parking issue. So those were, we were given the task to come up with a framework to chew on and we at a minimum wanted to come up with something, an example that addressed those five questions that we had. And we, we think we have to some degree. And this is the proposal. It's, it's just made up of five parameters. The first would be to limit type 90s to two licenses in Old Town. So that would, you know, you ask yourself how many live entertainment venues can Old Town actually sustain? You know, I don't know exactly, but two seemed reasonable. So that's the first parameter. In terms of the concern we heard from both the planning commission and the city council in the last meeting regarding minors at the facility, the proposal could include alcohol limited to 18 and older events. So if minors are present for whatever reason, alcohol is not served under the type 90. Permit the type 90 license via the city's entertainment license and not through a CUP. We're still working on that. We, we feel good about it, but we're not, I can't say for certain that that's a possibility, but we are certainly going to try to make the case that it, that it's, that it's justifiable. And of course, what that would do is it would leave the type 90 in compliance with the overall philosophy of the entertainment license, which separates entertainment from CUPs and would retain all the benefits of the city of the, of the entertainment license, which is regulatory control. So that's, that's a big one. Of course, all entertainment for the type 90 would be indoors. It's not, no outdoors. And then applications would be received on a first come, first served basis. So these are the five questions that we had previously and the red is kind of how we think we've addressed them in this specific proposal. So, and I mentioned, you know, we're going to license, like, go through the entertainment license, not the CUP. So that, that keeps us in, in compliance with, with that. The potential for restaurants to abandon food service en masse, well, if you have a limit of two, you, you won't have them abandoning en masse because there's only two licenses available. How many type 90s are permitted in Old Town? Max of two. We've limited that and we're, we're not proposing to address the rest of the city at this time. It can be addressed by the city council and planning commission at any time. Just, we're not addressing it here. It's not allowed in the rest of the city currently. How does it impact land use economics? Well, if there's only two, it's unlikely that it will alter the overall land use economics picture. And then parking issues associated with special events, max of two license will limit the impacts, although it's still likely there, there will be. Although it's still likely there, there will be traffic or parking impacts even with this proposal. So just a timeline, if this proposal was moved forward, very similar to the previous item. It requires amendment to the Old Town specific plan. It will, it will, we'll have to do SEQA. And then there's hearings that would be required in the same timeframe, four to five months. So that's really it. That's what we've got for research. We'll field questions on that as well as a potential policy framework for approving these. At this time, Mr. Mayor, I'll flip it back over to you. And I've, I've left the five parameters of the, of the policy proposal up there for, for ease.
So I did have a question. So the, if the type 90 is in the entertainment license and not in the CUP, that would limit concern that we'll have a good actor and then he sells it and gives it to a bad actor. We can take that type 90 away from the bad actor if deemed bad actor. And, or they would, they would still have to apply, wouldn't they? I mean, because that entertainment license doesn't follow like a CUP does.
Yeah, the entertainment license follows the person applying for the entertainment license.
Yeah.
And if the, the business is sold, that new business owner would need to apply for an entertainment license. So that's how the, it doesn't transfer between people or property owners or businesses. It doesn't, it doesn't, doesn't transfer. And then the other issue is if there is a bad actor, there are ways to move to revoke in a more immediate fashion. But regardless of that, it has, the, the license has to be renewed every year. And if there's a significant violator, the city has the authority to just not renew that license for the following year.
And that's something, when we created the entertainment license, we, we wanted more people to take advantage of it, but there really was no incentive to do that. So this kind of incentivizes and then gives control back to the city on this, this particular.
It was a trade-off between the city retaining some control and speed and ease of getting the license. The license is administrative. It's like a few hundred dollars versus a CUP is five, six, $7,000, depending. And require, the CUP requires five, six, seven months to be approved. This is over the counter.
Right.
So.
Perfect. All right, let's start with the planning commission first.
Okay, I just have a question, Luke. Well, first of all, I want to say, really like the idea of having the type 90 be a permit and not a CUP. Like, I really feel like that solves a lot of problems with the type 90. The second thing is, my question was, you said that they can serve liquor two hours before and one hour after. How is that even? How do we, how do we even, how is that even? How do we know, like, how is that even regulated in any way, shape, or form?
Well, first thing is the business needs to, you know, they would be in violation of their ABC. They're, they're, they're at risk of losing their ABC license if ABC shows up and they're not in compliance with that. They're at risk of, you know, we, we.
How often does ABC show up?
Well, they don't show up a lot, but you know who shows up a lot is the city Temecula. They show up every single week. And, you know, we would rely on our code enforcement team in Metro to, we're not going to be there at every second of every day. But if that's going on, on an ongoing basis, it's going to be, it's going to be picked up by the Metro team.
How many code enforcement do we have for Old Town speci, do we have any for Old Town specifically?
There's no, there's no, like, beat for Old Town. It's shared amongst all of the code enforcement officers.
Yeah.
Now, there are certain officers that work more often in, in Old Town, but they're all, they're all responsible to know and be, and be on, on patrol at some, some point during the year.
Okay, thank you.
Two questions. One is if we went with the entertainment license, then what type of alcohol license would be issued?
The type 90.
It would still be a type 90.
Yes, it's a type 90.
So we could do a type 90 and separate the music portion of it?
That's, that's what we think we can do. I, I can't give you 100% assurance today. We would have to flesh that out just a little bit more legally, but that's the route that we've been working on since we were given this initial direction.
Good, okay. So the, what, what is the definition of music? In other words, you know, having five people play music is not typically what causes problems and bad actors. It is when it morphs into something else, some other kind of show. So is, is the definition of music something that is truly only music or, and something we can manage? Or is it a wide definition that would allow other kinds of entertainment?
Yeah, I, I, I don't think it's, it's even worthwhile trying to define music because the type 90 allows for so much more than just music.
Okay.
It's a live entertainment facility. So it could be comedy, it could be talk, it could be bands, it could be DJs. It's live entertainment of, of, of all kinds. They're still required to comply with the noise ordinance. They're still required to comply with all of the other municipal requirements. They're still required to, to comply with their type 90 ABC license. So it's less about, as long as they're not engaging in adult entertainment, because adult entertainment is specifically prohibited in Old Town. There's only one area in town that's, that's, could be permitted. So as long as it's not that, then it's live entertainment and they're selling a ticket to get in and they have all the other parameters of the type 90, then it's not really the city's purview to, to start defining what they can and can't do on stage.
But overall, using our entertainment permit process does provide us more control over that.
So yeah, so say they get a, a type 90 license, they're, they get an entertainment license and they start violating the noise ordinance. The noise is just crazy.
Yeah.
Well, that's when we would engage the authorities we have under the license, the entertainment license, to potentially not renew it at the end of the year.
Good. Go ahead.
Thank you, I, I like the idea here. Got a discussion, though, I'll wait on a little bit. But a question going back to the cover charge or admission ticket. And I'm just trying to think of if there are other conversations or things we need to be aware of. Is it strictly stated in there that it's an admission ticket? Or is it, you know, you buy a ticket and you get two free drinks? Or you buy a meal and you get in for free or something like that?
This is right out of the code. So a music entertainment facility means a publicly or privately owned live performance venue, concert hall, auditorium, or enclosed arena where music or entertainment events are presented for a price of admission. That's what it says. So I'm, I'm not sure I understand entirely the question.
I, well, I, I guess what I was, I'm just trying to, and it's more for discussion purposes, but okay, I'm gonna, my, I'm gonna have a cover charge for, for an entertainer, but when you pay your cover charge, you get two free drinks when you come in. So it's not really a cover charge per se kind of a thing. And it's just for discussion purposes, it's something that we would need to address later in that discussion. But could this be potentially abused? I guess is what I'm trying to make sure that we're not setting ourselves up for where I'm doing an admission charge, but it's not really an admission charge.
So, so one thing there that I think we can look, that's a good question. One thing I think we can look into, and I, and I don't know this for sure, but I don't believe you're allowed to give away free alcohol drinks.
Okay.
Yeah, so, yeah, I, I don't, I don't think that's, that's, we can confirm that. And I'm hearing over my shoulder it is.
Yeah.
But I already, I already thought that. I, I don't think that they, they could do that.
Okay, great. And I said, it's just, you were just more of trying to prevent a problem ahead of time if it gets there. So it's the only question I have for now, thank you.
I have a couple of questions. How, how did we come up with two venues? Is it that you looked at all the buildings that could probably have this type of use and then, or?
No, that's a good question too. So the, the, we didn't look at buildings, we didn't look at capacity, we didn't do any kind of analysis like that. We didn't go that far. We, we kind of looked at two basic tests. It's like, how reasonably, how many 500 to 1,000 person venues can Old Town sustain? What's a reasonable number? I mean, it could be three, it could be one, I, you know, I don't know technically, but the kind of sniff test was two. And at a max. And then we have to think about the fact that right now in the specific plan, special event facilities, which this would be, are specifically prohibited. And that's not unintentional. It, Old Town's not set up to park multiple special event facilities throughout the district. We just don't have the parking set up for that. So that was one of the main concerns on limiting it to two, is that while I still think if there were two of these, there would be part, there would be parking impacts, at least it would be limited.
Okay. I know that the state or the code, the ABC code allows for minors. There's a, I think, go back please. So this would be only for over 21? Or, or how does that work? Because if it's a special event, maybe like a, I think you said wedding venue, so.
Yes, so this is, again, this is a framework, just a suggestion based on the concern that I heard in the last meeting about minors being present. This can be completely eliminated and just go with alcohols allowed and minors can be present, which the type 90 does allow for. Or you could have some other framework that you want to explore where maybe it's 18 and up only if alcohol is served. And if minors 18 or 17 and below are present, there's no alcohol served. It's just an example that you guys can chew on and think about.
And then are the hours going to go to midnight? Or is there going to be hours of operation for this?
Yes, they would be subject to the standard conditions of approval that we just talked about.
Got it.
Yeah.
Okay, that's it, thank you.
Well, I think you've done a good job, a good starting point. I don't have any problem with any of those. I do have a question though, is, you said adult entertainment is prohibited in Old Town. Is that strictly defined and where is that defined at?
Yeah, we have an adult entertainment ordinance in the code, a specific standalone ordinance where it's all listed.
Okay, so it has examples.
It's listed in excruciating detail.
Thank you.
All right, I'll, I'll go and jump in. Again, Luke, thanks for the presentation, much appreciated. I just have a couple of questions before I'll jump into comments maybe a little bit later. But do we know or have we done any research into type 90s either in the county and wine country? And/or I don't know that ABC has jurisdiction over Pechanga, over a sovereign nation. But if, assuming they do, is there any applications either of Pechanga or wine country for these type 90s?
I, I am unaware of any type 90 applications or permits within our region.
Okay.
So I don't think there are any, at least not to my knowledge. And then I don't think ABC, I, I don't know what their involvement with Pechanga is. I would, I would assume it's extremely limited or if any.
Okay, I'm just curious if we knew. And then the hours, and I think Commissioner Solis brought it up. We, in this type 90 license, it does, it, it talks about serving alcohol before and potentially an hour after. But we can set the parameters on the hours, is that what you're saying? So if we, if we said you can go till 2 o'clock, they couldn't technically serve till 3 o'clock? Or if we, you know, if like, we say no alcohol after midnight, their show would have to be, it would have to stop at 11 if they want to still serve alcohol till midnight?
Yeah, I believe it's state law that no alcohol can be served past 2 o'clock anywhere in, in the state. So that would supersede any, you know, framework in the CUP or, or a license that we issue here.
Okay. Those are just my two questions and I'll, I've got some comments I'll follow up with later.
No questions.
No, if it's our questions, I think I'm good for right now.
All right, so now that we're there, how about your comments?
Um, for comments for me, so understanding that Senator Scott Wiener had put this out through SB 793 and I had an opportunity to read through it a little bit. I still want to be able to dig into that and understand a little bit more behind of why this has morphed into something. And I guess really deeper, why is our city wanting to push this into our city? We're, we're in a good spot right now. I had a good conversation with Luke a couple of times and our city manager and wondering just the history behind having food in the restaurants. And I think that's a big part and we need to look at that because it does slow the metabolism down or, you know, the absorption of alcohol to be metabolized in the body when we do have food. So I think some of my questions really look at is, do we really want to step away from not having food and having restaurants in these bars? And are we willing to really just have more bars in a sense within our city? And that's kind of a concern of mine. Right now, we have one, I believe it's stampede. So are we wanting to open up just to have more bars? Really, that's what this is going to kind of open up to. I love the fact that it's having entertainment. I think we have a lot of entertainment here currently right now. And I think honestly, Luke, you and your team did a great job with answering the questions that we had. But my concerns are the food and do we really need more bars here in the area? And is that direction as far as old traditions with Temecula, is that where we're trying to head to?
All right, well, there's nothing more old tradition than drinking at a bar, a saloon in a western town. But no, I, I generally don't have any concerns with the type 90s. I think it's great. I talked earlier about, you know, having a vibrant entertainment district. I think that's important. So I think, you know, the two seems, you know, like, i- if we settle on two to start, I'd like us to revisit that to see, see what that looks like in practice, you know, if we give it a year or whatever. Like, I think it's important that, you know, we sort of monitor it and see what's going on. So I'm, you know, I'm fully supportive of it. I think it's important that we do diversify some of, some of what's going on down here. As far as the age, I'd really not want to get too, too strict on it. And, and partly because like, we, we talked about even minors, like you can go to Islands Restaurant and they serve, they have a full bar at Islands, right? And we don't sort of put these restrictions on, you know, who can be in these places. And most restaurants and many restaurants do that, right? So I don't know that I, I would want to put huge restrictions on, on, especially making it only 21 and up or 18 and older, and if minors are present, no alcohol. I really have, I have a problem with that. If we can do it through the entertainment license, I think that's great. I think if that's possible, so just to address that. But, but no, I mean, I think I'm, I'm excited to see, you know, kind of what this does again for, you know, a culturally vibrant district like Old Town. That's all I have for now, Mr. Mayor.
Mayor, if I could just say one last thing? I just wanted to add the fact that, again, you guys did a great job. And I think kind of what Zach had said, if I can just piggyback on that a little bit. I'd like to almost kind of see what other cities are doing. I mean, this is so brand new. And we have seen other instances, I'll give, I'll give an example as far as the Airbnbs, where our city decided to pull back, if I remember being in the meeting a couple of years ago. And they decided to say, hey, let's hold on and kind of see what other cities are doing to see if this is a good fit for our city. And I think this is an opportunity to say, hey, our staff did an excellent job on this. They took our concerns and they, they put up restrictions and policies and boundaries. But now can we hold on to this and say, let's go see what other cities are doing as well? So that way, we don't roll, do a fast rollout into something we can't pull back. And I think that's kind of a concern of mine is just slowing the roll of this.
We actually reacted to illegal Airbnbs in Temecula. We didn't, we didn't allow it.
You did a good job, we did a good job.
Yeah.
I'm just saying.
We shut it down.
We did, but I'm, that's not that, I'm just saying we wanted to take a look at and see what other cities were doing. I remember specifically that was.
This is so brand new, there is no other cities doing this yet.
Exactly, and that's what I'm saying. That's my whole point is there's other cities that haven't done this yet, so I want to see.
I would agree with Councilmember Alexander on this with it being so new. We don't know the cause and effect of this type of license yet. And like Luke said, in Riverside County, he's not aware of any. So we don't really know the, again, what this type 90 is going to look like. And it came out in 2022, it was amended in 2023. What does it look like going forward in 2024 and 2025? I still think there are so much unknowns about the type 90s. There are, I mean, I have a few things that I'm concerned with. And really, I feel like, like Luke said, the, the contradictory nature of it where it's, it's for music entertainment facilities, but it doesn't have to be exclusively a music entertainment facilities. There's so many, I guess, workarounds. There's so many, I guess, workarounds to this type of license. I don't know how I feel about the no food service. I do like how Old Town is coming into this craft eatery. I do like the food service with the alcohol. I don't like that minors are present. Just as a father imagining, you know, your kids at a bar type, a bar type, a bar, surrounded by other adults that are drinking, but the underage kids aren't drinking. I feel like just relating it to Islands, like the vibe of Islands would be completely different from the vibe of a type 90 quote unquote music entertainment facility. I don't like that mixture. I don't think that mixture would be good for law enforcement. And maybe Captain Durham can speak to that. But I agree, I think that this, it'd be important to, with this right now, being as new as it is and nobody else implementing it in Riverside County, I think it's important to sit back and let others implement type 90s, see how they pan out, let them be the guinea pigs for this type of license. And maybe they are great licenses. And then we revisit this in 2024 or 2025 moving forward. Say, hey, this actually is a great license and it could fit well in our city. And maybe by that time, we've dealt with the parking issues that we've had in Old Town. And I agree that I don't think Old Town is set up to hold special events such like as this. And when there is a large music festival or entertainment, they have to get a special permit for that day or that weekend, where this would just be a constant entertainment that would be going on. And I don't think that we have the parking here in Old Town to be effective and to make sure that this is okay. So my current position and my vision for the Temecula, again, is just to sit back, let others implement a type 90 if they so wish to do so, see how it pans out in those cities and then maybe revisit it in the future. Thank you, Mayor.
So I have a question before I give my comment. So can we limit the capacity of a type 90 entertainment facility?
Yeah, I think so.
So that's what I'm thinking because, you know, there's probably only one place in all of Temecula and they are already conditioned to be able to do it, and that's the Stampede. So we don't have buildings big enough to have 1,000 or 500 people in Old Town. So to me, it's kind of a, it's a moot point to say, you know, parking is going to be an issue because it's not. I mean, as far as, as far as what we have available, unless someone's going to tear something down and build some big place like the Stampede, which that ain't going to happen. So anyways, for me personally, you know, when Kaiser Marston did the study for the city of Temecula, it was all about bringing the civic center into Old Town to create private investment. And that resulted in our restaurants and, but the other part was entertainment. Entertainment is important, especially for a tourist town. And we're a tourist town. And so by not promoting and giving an entertainment venue the ability to be profitable, we're basically strangling the entertainment venues because they don't have the ability. We all know Spirits is where they all make all their money. Selling wine, you don't make a ton of money. So if you can't sell spirits, and I'm a Jack and Coke guy, I'd rather have a Jack and Coke than a glass of wine. And so, but I can't get it at a place that I go. So it's like, so for me personally, that's where this comes into play. It gives, it basically gives them the ability to keep that entertainment value in Old Town. And, you know, I don't want to talk about specific business, but there is value in these entertainment venues. And this is kind of like a lifeline to those venues. And yeah, no one's doing it because not every city is a tourist town. Not every city has the type of downtown, old town that we have. So if we don't do it, who's going to do it? And so that's where I don't like the argument that let's sit back and wait. We didn't sit back and wait when we banned Airbnbs either. You know, we took the bull by the horns and said, no, it's done, it's over. And so, and in this case, I think it's the opposite. We're going to, we're going to let the bull out and we need to control the bull and allow something like this. And let's try it out. Let's test it. Let's see how it can benefit these facilities. Because I, you know, it really is an economic tool. And so for a business who maybe wants to come down here, but they can't get the, you know, the spirits license, they're not going to come down here. And so to me, entertainment is huge in Old Town. Like I said before, when I would come down here on hot summer nights, you know, five, six summers ago, it was absolutely phenomenal. I mean, I absolutely loved it, you know. But so that's my position. I would 100% support this. Because again, we're not talking about 500 cars in Old Town coming to an event facility because there isn't one. And there won't be one because there isn't any buildings big enough to hold such a facility. So, so I, I'm not a what-if guy. I don't look at, well, what if this or what if that? I don't go there. I look at the positive, I look at the negative, and then I make a decision. And for me, this is the right decision, so. All right. Did you guys have comments? Yes, please, go. Okay.
Okay. Yeah, this has been an interesting conversation. And I guess the question I have for Luke, first of all, before I make my comments is, because staff did an amazing job with the entertainment license. So how do you feel like with the entertainment license? And because originally, right, that was our concern, that this was a conflict with the entertainment license. How do you see that now?
Well, if, if we can use the entertainment license, it certainly does, it certainly does make it a lot more palatable from a staff perspective in terms of mitigating any potential problems or bad actors that we might encounter, simply because that's what the entertainment license was designed to deal with.
Right.
With the limited term annual reapplication nature of that license. It gives the city a lot of regulatory control to deal with bad actors. So yes, it makes.
So if it were a permit and not a CUP, then you don't see that conflict anymore? I guess that's my question.
Well, right. The conflict was that we would be potentially putting entertainment liquor into a CUP when the entertainment license specifically took entertainment out of CUPs and left alcohol in CUPs.
Right.
Right? But so that conflict doesn't exist under this potential framework. It just doesn't exist because we're using the entertainment license.
Right. Okay, thanks. So that's kind of, because I see, I see both sides, honestly. And I think at the last meeting, I was like, no, no type 90. We cannot do that. You know, but I see this, if we can use it as a permit and not a CUP, then I look at, you know, this gentleman who spoke earlier and understand that frustration. You know, still have the question about parking and food not served and limit capacity. So I think one of the things, you know, that has always given us a little bit of, whoo, is that food is served, right? So that's still, you know, something that I have a question about. I don't know if we can do anything about that. And, and I think that, you know, our staff has been so proactive with the entertainment license itself that I see them also being proactive with this particular license and monitoring it closely if we do decide to do it. And I think I definitely wouldn't want any more than two. I think that's a good number if we did decide to do that. But I don't know if there's anything we can look at as far as food, just because I think that mitigates alcohol problems from what I understand. So I think, I think that was all I had. Just that we need, if we do decide, we really need to monitor it closely and see how it affects. Since we don't know, right? We don't know. And yes, we shut down those illegal. That was important.
So food, I think if you look at the evening and how people progress through the evening, I don't think food is as big of an issue because I think most people are going to go to another restaurant, have dinner, or perhaps even have dinner at home, then come to the entertainment. And if they have any food there, it's going to be, you know, nuts and chips kind of thing. So I don't think requiring food there really is going to change the whole thing. I think also most people are, I don't think people are going to bring minors to a music venue. I think they're there most, at least my experience with my kids and grandkids and everything is, they're going to get away from the kids, not to, you know, not to bring kids to something like that. So I'm not, not as concerned with that as far as if we had that rule affecting the business that they bring in. On looking at type 90s elsewhere, since I gathering there's very few of them out there, I would be in favor of a very quick reach out, find out if there's any around in Southern California, what issues they may have had, and then, you know, let's get on with it. I don't think, I don't think waiting is going to give us any, any new information if there's not a lot out there. But I think if there is one or two out there and they've been out there a year or two, if there's anything, any surprises, I think we'll know pretty quickly and then we can have that conversation. But overall, I think particularly if we can go with a separate entertainment license, I think that really relieves a lot of the issues that we have. And I love what Luke and your department has come up with. I think this is, this is great.
Yeah, Luke, thanks again for putting this together. I think this is another example of we took an idea with something, kind of thought a little bit outside the box. How do we make it work? I love the idea of the entertainment license for the control that the city has. Mayor Stu, I'm glad you brought up the parking because that was kind of something I was going to mention, you know, these potential businesses might not be looking to serve 500 to 1,000. They might be looking to serve 50, 60, 100. I mean, there's something different there. On the food note, I just want to throw out because we're talking about the music entertainment, but it's been mentioned, you know, maybe special events, wedding, birthday parties, retirement parties. Not all these venues have kitchens or the ability to serve food. So I think that's something that needs to be taken into consideration. I think there's been a little bit of dialogue, I mean, even just in your comments there, Bob, about entertainment being after dinner. What's to say entertainment's not during the day? What's to say it's not an afternoon on a weekend? So I mean, there's definitely opportunities there. And I think the entertainment license keeps the control with the city to be able to kind of say, this is how we want it to look. Here's what we're going to hold you to the fire with. And if you're not abiding by those, it's much easier than we've obviously seen with the CUP earlier. With regards to minors, maybe I've got a little bit of a different take. I know like, for example, if I'm going to go out, and this is just me personally, my son's not 21. So if he can be my driver, it's one less drunk driver on the road, or I don't worry about Uber or something else like that. You know, if we're talking about bringing, you know, a jazz music or something that's not necessarily adult entertainment, and I don't mean that in the sense of adult entertainment from that perspective, you know, but, but something that, you know, something that an 18, 19, 20-year-old would be interested in coming to see or something, I would hate to see the entire business be affected by that. Right. If minors present, there's no alcohol served. But what happens when you have a wedding? What happens when you have a birthday party or a retirement party and you want other families to be able to be present? I think that's something that should be taken into consideration also. I think we kind of think of one particular venue, one particular type of entertainment, and that's what we have in mind. But when we're looking at everything that this could pertain to, you know, because of that opens the door for some of those other things as well. So that'd be my only concern as far as what's written in here. I do like the idea of two. I think that is a way of us saying, hey, this is so new, but we're controlling the narrative, we're controlling the process. And I would agree with Councilmember Schwenk of, you know, saying, yes, we're going to limit it to two, but let's revisit and see, is this something that's successful that we can mirror elsewhere? Is it worthy of expanding any opportunities here in Old Town? Or maybe two would be the limit in Old Town, but we do want to consider opening up to other areas of the city after letting this be our test project that we have control over, rather than seeing what another city or municipality does with theirs and then waiting to see. I'd be in favor of us setting that narrative moving forward. Thank you.
All right. Luke, I had a question. Is the city entertainment license, that's a yearly license, so?
That's right.
So every, the business has to get it on a yearly basis and we can just not?
We cannot renew with cause, with cause.
Sure.
You have to have a reason.
So I think that's, that's a great opportunity for this type 90. Also, I agree with the mayor and, you know, we should, we should give this an opportunity. And maybe we will get maybe new businesses like Laugh Factory. Maybe that type of business can come and, or maybe two of them can come. And then we can go from there and see how, you know, these businesses bring these entertainments, because they're the professionals in this, allowing businesses to be creative and come up with new entertainment for the downtown. And I also agree, a lot of cities want a successful downtown like ours. And, you know, giving this type 90 an opportunity through this city entertainment license process is a, is a great opportunity. So, thank you.
Well, like Laney, I initially at our last meeting was pretty much leaning, why do we need these? But after today, I can certainly agree with that. I'm just wondering to alleviate the concerns both Stu and Jessica brought up. Is it possible to put a sunset provision in this to be renewed if it's successful or not?
Well, each one of the entertainment licenses, it has a sunset. It has an annual sunset. So that's already kind of built in.
Okay.
Yeah.
But that would have to be with cause, where if you just put a, if you just put a sunset provision in, then we revisit it a certain date. I'm just saying, is that a possibility? I don't know about legal stuff, so.
I mean, you could do that. I can see problems with that, just from a business perspective, making investment with no, because you saw the requirements, they have to have a stage, they have to have employees, they have to have lighting, sound system, all these things that it's a large investment for, at least with the entertainment license, but we still retain the regulatory control. If they are good actors, they know that they will be able to continue with a going concern, you know, of a business. With a sunset, I mean, I could see that as being problematic for investment.
Yeah, I see your point absolutely.
Yeah, just a quick follow-up. Again, it's been a good conversation. Listen to everybody. I think the, we need to move on this. We can't just sit back and say, well, let's just wait and see what happens or let's look around. I think it's important that we move through this, we send it to planning and then it goes to council. I also think that, you know, we don't know what we don't know. And so maybe it's important that we let an applicant, applicant sort of set the parameters and say, this is our business model. This is what we're trying to accomplish with respect to age or whatever they're trying to do. Let's hear them out before, you know, sort of wholesale closing out on some of this stuff. Again, I'm fine starting off with two. Again, I'm more positive typically on, you know, like, especially with the uptick in enforcement that we've had over the last three years with Metro, Metro Plus and everything we're doing down here. I'm really confident that this is going to be beneficial to our community. And I did like the conversation, I think it was Commissioner Ruiz talked about, we have this sort of one idea, but there are so many opportunities for this. I think we don't even, again, we don't know what we don't know. So I would just encourage us to move this forward to planning and then, and then on to council. So we can, we can hear an applicant out and we can see what this does to our community. I think it's going to be beneficial. Thank you.
Yeah, a few notes. There's been a lot of talk about the capacity. And although I would agree that there's not maybe one venue that would have, besides the one that already has a permit, 500 to 1,000 individuals attending this, if we had two and both two had 250 capacity, that is 500. And then if we're revisiting this and we want to increase it again, there's. and then if we're revisiting this and we wanna increase it again, there's that one thousand, right? There's the, the three, the four type nineties, and now we have a thousand-plus people at four different events, and where is the parking, um, to hold them in Old Town? I, I guess, I, that's where I see the, the, the issue with the parking. All it takes is two, two-hundred-and-fifty-capacity venues, which this would allow to have five hundred cars at, at one particular time, not including all of the other restaurants and bars we have in Temecula. Um, in regards to, uh, bringing businesses here, they would have to come, uh, yesterday, because if, if, if we approve the type ninety, you know that there's gonna be two applicants that are applying for the type ninety tomorrow, and now those new businesses that we want to bring in won't have the opportunity to have a business license, 'cause there's only two of them. So as far as new businesses coming in, unless we increase it again, then we increase them, and then we have to deal with the parking issues, we have to deal with all of these different things. Um, so in my mind, that this would bring new businesses to Temecula, I don't see that, because as, as far as the, the limit on two, um, those would be filled up with type ninety licenses as soon as we open up the applications for a type ninety. Um, so the first come, first served, and then it's like, where's the, the equitable nature, nature in that? When, uh, those first come, first served to have the permit, um, they have to be renewed, but if they're good actors, they get renewed. We never increase the two unless we go to Uptown. Uh, now those original two businesses are the only ones that have that license. Um, and I, I guess my last thing, um, would be to our, uh, Chief of Police here. Um, what would you think about the, uh, approval of a type ninety license? How that would affect law enforcement in Old Town? Would we need an uptick in enforcement? Um, what are events that you've seen in your twenty-plus-year career in law enforcement that deal with minors as well as, um, of age individuals drinking in the same vicinity?
I think a lot of it depends on the event coordinator. So earlier in my career, when I was handsome and had hair, um, we would have events like this at businesses. They served food, though, but they would shut down like a bowling alley, and it would a cover charge to get in, wristbands, and depending on what type of music was played, depending on what type of crowd came out, and at some times, there was no problems, other times, there were. So it kinda depends on demographics and things like that. Now, as a father and a twenty-four-year veteran of RSO, I do have concerns when adults and alcohol are with minors. Uh, but it's different if a parent is there. It's different if it's a designated driver, or a family event like a retirement party, renting out one of these or joining there, and, and their loved ones are seeing someone, you know, celebrate an occasion. It, so there's just a lot of variables. What I really like, though, is how Luke is describing that if this is a bad actor, you're done in a year.
Yeah.
I mean, you're done. You're done. Um, and the Metro deputies will have no problem facilitating that request with the city attorney, city manager, code enforcement, to, to, to set that example, because your deputies live here too. They want Old Town successful, they want it safe, uh, and they're doing those bar checks, they're walking around. But those are general concerns. Um, I do like the proposal, I'm being eighteen and older, alleviates some of my dad concerns. It, it really does. Um, but I, I'm getting into opinions, and I don't want to go there with the council, but I do like the things that were presented, and some of the comments that were made, and we can, we can, we can work with this, and be, uh, and be good partners with the city, and, and forcefully shut something down with, uh, with the city's help as well.
Uh, last question, Captain. Uh, would you say that we have enough, uh, members on our Metro team currently that would be able to enforce, uh, businesses with type nineties, the two businesses?
It really depends on, on call volume, but that would be one of my concerns. And as I spoke to earlier, if we're allowing additional established businesses here to stay open till two P.M., I can only assume call volume will go up, because there will be more drinking and more people here, which I will be, if that was the case, if there, so if we did do type nineties, and there were problems going up, I would ask for more deputies, and deputies aren't cheap. They're, right now, a deputy on the Metro team's four-hundred-and-two-thousand dollars, and I like them in pairs. So eight-hundred thousand.
Thank you very much, Captain. I guess, uh, just to summarize my, uh, point right now, I think it is, um, worthwhile to sit back and wait. I know, uh, some of us have different opinions on that. Um, but like the Airbnbs, we, we legalized all short-term Airbnbs. We didn't just legalize the illegal ones, we made all of short-term Airbnbs under thirty days illegal.
We actually didn't make them illegal, they were illegal from the start. We never permitted Airbnbs in the city of Temecula, ever.
We never allowed them.
We never allowed them. They were running illegally. We shut down illegal operations. That's not the same thing as what we're gonna do here.
Right, right, but at first, right, they were, they weren't illegal, is that correct? 'Cause there was no standard across the city?
They were always illegal.
Oh, okay, so there was always, as soon as Airbnbs came out, the initial thing was no Airbnbs in town?
Absolutely.
Yeah, the diff- the differentiation, if we're talking STRs, was, was the county, was the line country, had a different policy stance than the city of Temecula, and that, that's still true today.
Yeah.
You know? But, no, they were never permitted in the city of Temecula, when it became a thing.
Thank you for that clarification. That's all I have, Mayor.
So I, I do, you know, I, I'm listening to your concerns, and it, it doesn't ring in my ears, because you talk about a two-hundred-and-fifty-person facility times two. Where are they? Can you point out a building that can hold two-hundred-and-fifty people? And not just one, but two? Other than the stampede that already is permitted to do all this?
That is a great question. I would ask, I guess, our, uh, Fire Marshal, what are the capacities for all the buildings in Old Town? Um, off the top of my head, I, I couldn't tell you.
There isn't any. There isn't any. The most you can get in any one of these buildings, maybe a hundred people. So, so to me, your parking concern, your concern about overcrowding, is, is not, it's a moot point. It doesn't exist. So, so why put your opinion into something that it's a what-if on a scenario that can't even happen? That's, that's my, I'm listening to you, and I'm going, but it's not even there. You're, you're, you're looking at rainbows and dragons, you know?
I do love rainbows and dr- that's a great point. That's a great point.
Yeah.
Um, and again, if, if there are no facilities, um, luckily, we're not voting on this tonight, but if there are no, uh, uh, buildings with the capacity for indoor-outdoor space, I know this is only indoor entertainment, but, uh, they also have outdoor capacity that have over, you know, two-hundred-plus, um, that'd be a great point.
Yeah, there's none, so.
Would it, would it change if, for instance, the hotel that wants to be established down here in Old Town, would that, that would meet over the capacity, uh, wouldn't it? Or would they have their own parking?
And that'd be something Luke or Aaron could address, but...
What's the question?
So, um...
If a hotel converted?
The hotel that they're looking at, I know it's still going through planning.
Oh, a new, new construction?
Yes, exactly. What is, I know they have about a thousand people occupancy in there, if I'm correct.
So the question is, new construction, hasn't been built, hotel, convention space?
Yes.
Would the convention space meet what type of occupancy, I guess?
Would that, would that be?
Would that? Um, again, the project is speculative, has not been approved by the Planning Commission.
Right, of course.
But Luke, do you wanna speak to how we would handle that scenario? Say, two years from now?
They would, i- in the scenario you're talking about, they're required to have a thousand-person conference center space. That would be permitted as a conference center. If they wanted to turn it into a music venue, they would need a type ninety.
Okay.
'Cause that's not, that's not, just because it's conference, doesn't mean you get to...
Yeah, no, I'm just thinking occupancy. I mean, I just hear occupancy, and I, that was one of my questions, actually.
But it wouldn't be part of their development approvals.
Right.
It'd be separate, handled separately.
Right, and my, I, this was the first time I even really had heard or considered about the parking, so I just, I'm thinking outside the box of what other places are gonna be higher occupa- or occupancy. Um, and that was my other question, is, is did we have any numbers as far as, more or less, how many people can be in most of these bars for occupancy? I wasn't too sure if we have that for code enforcement. What, what does that look like?
You know, I think...
Yeah, we, we have that information, we don't have it available in front of us. But yes, every, every unit has an, an occupancy established by the Fire Marshal.
Is, is it typically about a hundred or less, or?
I couldn't tell you. I'd have to, I'd have to look at that information.
I think the mayor's hypothesis, though, is pretty close to what we would find. I mean, if we go and dig into occupancy in Old Town as it's built out today, I think, Mr. Mayor, you're, you're probably spot-on in terms of a hundred and south of that, you know? Not including sort of outdoor patio space and some other things that people have, so.
And this is strictly for indoor use?
Right.
This particular one, so.
No, this is good. I mean, this gives us the opportunity. I mean, I appreciate your, your, your question, um, Calphus, because it just, it just, we're just talking here, you know? Um, overall, and, uh, Chief, I thank you for your input, 'cause I know we had the same exact conversation as far as what this looks like. Uh, I, for me, right now, I'm still at kind of a sit-and-wait. We don't have to wait years, but I do wanna see kind of the rollout of other cities and what they're doing, because sometimes there are problems, and I just don't wanna speed up any problems. So, that's kinda where I'm at still.
Okay. All right.
Mr. Mayor, you want me to summarize?
Summarize, please.
Again, um, what I heard. Um, so I think there was a common thread that wove its way through the nine of you, um, which was everyone seems very pro, uh, city's entertainment license process. So, uh, Luke, I think we need to continue, Peter, we need to continue working with your team, um, in finding a way to make that a mechanism in this, in this project. Um, now, having said that, um, I kinda heard from the Planning Commission, you guys were pretty unanimous, the five of you, on, um, on moving this forward as proposed, with the cap, uh, of two, um, for, for Old Town. One question, well, I'll come back to my question. On the council side, um, you guys were split, and I heard, I heard from two of you, kinda wait and see, and then I heard from two of you that, um, move forward as is. So my recommendation will probably be similar to the last one. Let's, let's move this forward with the Planning Commission's seemingly consensus and recommendation, um, and work with legal counsel on the things that we heard today, and then, of course, the City Council will have the final, final say. Um, one question I did wanna have, since we're having this conversation, though, um, it gets a little murky. I think we should define Old Town. Um, if, if this is a geographic sort of, um, program, um, sometimes we like to call it archway to archway. That's, that's the geographic definition of Old Town, but others you ask will no, no, it actually continues south, you know, down two-seventy-nine. So for purposes of discussion, Luke, should, shouldn't we kinda define the parameters if indeed there's gonna be two capped, and within what, north and south?
Yeah, so the, the Old Town specific plan has different districts, and the one that we were kinda focusing on, I think is the obvious one, is the downtown core, and that has a geographic location established in the specific plan, and it's fundamentally arch to arch.
Thank you for clarifying that.
Can I just ask one question?
Yeah.
Um, I think what I'm not clear on, as far as how many events, it, was that on the very first slide? Like, with the type ninety, what they're allowed? Is there a specific number of events?
No, there, there, there is no cap on the number of events. What I was describing is, is that there was a change to the law in the follow-up year that allowed type nineties to host private, non-ticketed events, like wedding event, event, uh, weddings and, and things like that. But that, to stay valid with the type ninety, the establishment had to have more ticketed, open-to-the-public, live entertainment events than they did private events.
But there's no number there at all, as far, as far as the events? But we would maybe look into that to see if that's something... But as far as type ninety, that's what it is, there's no limit.
Yeah, I don't think that we were, you know, we were letting the, you know, once the business is given the license to operate, that then it's up to them to how many, how many events they have.
Okay. All right, thank you.
So do we have the ability to put in our type ninety? Or can, can we change it a little bit for our purposes? Like, um, no weddings, no, no big, uh, that would draw? I don't know. I don't know. I mean, my brain's kinda...
I, I, I hear what you're saying.
Yeah.
Um, probably?
Yeah.
You know, I, we'll have to work with the legal team on that.
Yeah.
One, one of the things I heard is, you know, min- uh, limiting the capacity.
Yeah.
You know, so no thousand, whatever the number is.
Right, right.
Um, that's something we'll look into, if this moves forward, and it sounds like it will. Um, and we'll look into, you know, what kind of other limitations we can put on, not to say that we would, but what, what kind of authorities we have, and where will we be preempted by state law?
Right.
So that's where we're gonna need to work with the legal team.
Yeah. Okay, perfect. All right, I think we're ready to move on to number three.
Okay. Where are we at here? Okay. The third and final topic of the day. Um, outdoor live entertainment. So staff has, uh, there was, there was comments about this at the last meeting, but it, more has come up in the interim between the meetings, um, this, uh, this, you know, interest in revisiting, uh, outdoor live entertainment in the Old Town area, and specifically, as City Manager said, in the downtown core. That's really what this is about. Um, so we were kinda given the direction to, to take a look at the history, so everybody's up to speed on kinda how and why the, the current regulations are what they are, and then to, to kinda talk further from there. So to give you a little history, um, and we're talking about outdoor live entertainment, so that's outside of a business, and that also includes indoor live entertainment that has doors and windows open. So that's considered outdoor live entertainment, um, 'cause sound obviously travels. Um, so prior to two thousand and ten, which is when the current specific plan, uh, was adopted, outdoor li- live entertainment wasn't, was allowed with the CUP. Um, and, and prior to ten, two thousand and ten, and, and after, frankly, um, there, there were significant noise issues without, with, with that, with that setup. Um, there were, there were full bans and, and things taking place, and the, the noise complaints were coming from as far away as Rancho Highlands on the other side of the freeway, if you can believe that. But it, it was consistent, so we know it wasn't one, it wasn't like a one-off. Um, so that was all kind of, uh, an issue during the time that we were updating the, the specific plan in two thousand and ten. Uh, well over forty community meetings on many issues, um, but what was definitely discussed was outdoor live entertainment, and the desire at that time to limit it, uh, back in two thousand and ten, because of all the issues were happening. And ultimately, in the adoption, uh, the City Council adoption of that amendment to the specific plan, outdoor live entertainment became expressly prohibited, only indoor, indoor live entertainment. Um, but since it was allowed prior two thousand and ten, there are actually three establishments that have a grandfathered CUP for outdoor live entertainment, um, and that, that's just, you know, that just is. And then, uh, outdoor live entertainment is currently limited indoor, like I mentioned, via, um, an entertainment permit or via a previously-approved CUP. So there are, there are a number of CUPs that have live entertainment, it's all indoors, uh, regardless of the three, um, grandfathered. Um, there is one minor exception, and outdoor live entertainment in Old Town is currently limited to one event per quarter via a temporary use permit. So think of St. Godomayo, or, um, uh, St. Patrick's Day. A business can get up to four outdoor live entertainment events in a single year, but they can't do ongoing operations with outdoor live entertainment. So this goes to kind of what I mentioned. Um, there is, uh, apparently some interest, uh, in the community to revisit this. I know staff has been approached, uh, City Council and the Planning Commission have been approached, um, on an individual basis, um, to kind of say, hey, that was, that was then, this is now, so to speak, um, and to take a look at it. And that, and, and I know we've talked a little bit, Mr. Mayor, and I think this is a good time for me to kinda turn it over to you, and, 'cause I know you have some thoughts on the matter, and you wanted to get the first take.
Yeah. So I've talked to, you know, a fair amount of restaurants in Old Town that, um, are struggling. And so, um, but to, to have a, uh, live entertainment tends to draw people in and creates more of a event for dinner. So if they can, you know, and, and my vision was, you know, no more than a two-piece, you know, a guitar and a singer. Um, and, uh, I, I cruise Old Town every single week. I mean, every Friday and sometimes Saturday, I'm cruising. And there have been people at restaurants doing it illegally, and, and yet, when I drive by, I can barely hear them. And yet, the ambiance at that restaurant is enhanced by, you know, that intimate music that's coming from, you know, a, a singer and/or guitar. No drums, we don't want any bass, we don't, we just want just a nice little light music in the background. And what that does, i- it, it allows the patron to wanna stay a little longer and be a little bit more, uh, engaged in the restaurant, whether it be, you know, have another drink and listen to a couple more songs, or, you know, order some more food, or whatever. So I'm looking for opportunities for our restaurants in Old Town to be able to monetize an incredible downtown area with Southern California weather, where we sit outside all the time and enjoy the outdoor dining. And that's what, everybody wants to sit outside when they go to Old Town Temecula. They don't wanna sit inside, they wanna sit outside. So, um, I wanna be able to give these restaurants the opportunity to be able to monetize that, and, um, you know, be successful. and, you know, be successful. I'm, I'm trying to do everything possible to make sure Old Town restaurants can be viable. And to me, this is one of those things that creates, like I said, an ambiance, that intimate nature. And even if it started just as a pilot program, to where we just offer it as a, let's see how it goes, and like a sunset-type thing, if, if, if it doesn't work, it doesn't work. We wipe it off and, you know. But that puts the responsibility on the restaurants to be good actors and want to see this program succeed. So, you know, and with some, you know, whatever, you know, requirements we have, you know, an amp, a amp, you know, I don't know, just something that, yeah.
Yeah, so we, we took that direction to, kind of similar to the last issue, put together a potential proposal for the group to chew on as well. Could be different. It's just a way to kind of see how it could potentially work if that's what everybody wants to do. And this is really it. So, like you said, you know, staff has, staff doesn't want, you know, we're concerned about opening that box that was closed in 2010. But that was a specific thing that was going on with live bands, and there was this whole, you know, circumstance behind all of that. But what you mentioned is a temporary pilot program, that sunsets at one year unless the council takes further action. So that means it's set for a year, it's going to close, it's going to close out in a year unless the city council specifically takes action to move it to a different stage. So, and just like you said, you know, quote, "a musician and their guitar," or some other type of instrument. Two musi-, musician maximum. Outdoor live entertainment would be limited to 10:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. Would apply to entertainment played indoors if windows and doors are open, like I mentioned earlier. No full bands and no DJs. Administratively-approved temporary use permit in the pilot program, and with the city's ability to revoke the permit immediately. And it does not apply to the three grandfathered outdoor live entertainment CUPs. So, what we have here is basically a limited-term pilot program that limits the type of music. We'll, we'll get into the details of, you know, amplification and things like that. But that would give the city ultimate control over whether to end or continue the program as it sees fit.
All right.
That's it.
Let's, open, questions? Mr. Trejo?
I guess my first question, I don't know. I, I think I know how you're going to answer it. But I think ideally, it sounds great that there's a musician with their guitar, and that's it. But how do we really control that? And I, I get the sunsetting and all that would help. But that's kind of my question. I don't know how we really control that outdoor entertainment. And I, and I, this isn't a question. I guess that was a question. Would you answer that question?
I think what we would do is, when they come in for their temporary license, they would have to specifically state which musi-, which instruments they were using. They would have to identify the specific equipment, the amplification equipment they were using, and then they would have to stick to that.
Okay. And I do like that, and now this is a comment, forgive me, but I do like that that applies to entertainment played indoors with the windows and doors open, for sure. Because we do have some of that going on already. All right. I think, I don't have any other questions.
The, I like the comment about no drums, because that's, and bass. But there is another instrument that I would have a concern about, which is keyboard or synthes-, synthesizer. Hard to say. Which could easily become drums or anything else. So, if we were to go with guitars only and make it that simple, at least to start out with, I think that would definitely be very, very clear and simplify things. And I do like the idea of having, you know, a one-year program where we try it and we find out what, you know, what issues we're going to have, and then we can either deal with those issues, or if it's just off the table, it's off the table. So the, the only other thing I would be concerned about, I don't, I don't think this creates the issue, but is creating an issue where to do this, we, a business ends up spending a lot of money, and then a year later, that money that they invested is, you know, is gone. I don't think, I don't think, you know, guitar or amplifier, and I think the other thing, too, is, is if we restrict it to a number of musicians with a number of guitars, we restrict it to a number of amplifiers as well, or speakers, or that type of thing, which helps to, you know, manage the, the sound level.
Yeah, I would agree. I like the idea. I like the, the one-year kind of pilot program with it. The, the challenge I see, and it's actually been removed here, but, but kind of mentioned, is the, the measure of amplification, you know? And, I mean, you get a business that's right next door to each other, are they, do they start then competing with each other? You know, doors and windows are open, like that, that to me would need to be clearly defined somehow if, if we're going to have, you know, any strength with the, with the temporary use permit. Decibels get really hard and onerous. I mean, we want someone to walk around with something like that. So that, that would be the only thing that I would like to see addressed, is how that would be, would be managed. But other than that, I think, I think what's been presented here definitely has opportunity. And it's another way, like you mentioned, Mayor, just trying to help out businesses, you know, with, with some other type of draw or some other type of, of way to keep them profitable and in business here, here in Temecula. Thanks.
Sounds like a great idea for all the new, with some of the restaurants here in Old Town. The only maybe small comment that I would make is, if we were possibly had the opportunity to include maybe a trio or a mariachi, which is not amplified music, it's typically no speakers. Usually mariachi is about four to five, but again, it's not amplified. So it's just someone singing, violin, guitar, and a bass, but again, it's not amplified. So maybe if that can be a possibility to maybe add, so we can have a variety of music, and also businesses have the opportunity to, maybe one month it could be just one type of artist, and then the next month it could be another type of artist. Gives the restaurants opportunity to include more people instead of limiting to two. And I, while, while understanding that no drums, no amplified music. So it's just a, just a small comment. Maybe that could be included.
Luke, you had mentioned that this is available to a temporary use permit, correct? Like on, let's just, for sake of argument, Cinco de Mayo, how many, if, let's say, if 10, 10 restaurants or whatever came up and put a permit, would that be too many? Would we have to identify limits on those?
You know, we, we've talked about that, and I think that where we landed is, it's a pilot program. And in the absence of a, a specific strategy for limiting, that we would just say, we're not limiting. And it kind of opens up the universe to learn all the lessons possible over that year. And if we, if we've come up with a good reasoning as to how it should be limited during that year, then that's the opportunity to learn that lesson and put that into a permanent program later on. But to, to be less restrictive in the pilot program time period is kind of where we, where we landed on that issue.
Okay, and I, I don't know about music. I got kicked out of band in fourth grade for not practicing. But you might want to, the devil's in the details, obviously, and you might want to look at, for example, musician with their guitar. How about a musician with a banjo? Or a musician with a dulcimer, or a string instrument? They're all string instruments, a piano, for instance. So you may want to look at strict definitions on that?
So, so I, I don't want everybody to get hung up on the, the quote, "musician with a guitar." That was more of to give you a sense of the intensity that we were kind of envisioning. You know, it's a, it's, it's a person or two with some instruments that is, you know, in a more of a mellow kind of idea versus a band that's amplified. So I don't want, that's why I think air quotes here, you know, or quotations, is it's not just a musician and a guitar. It could be different instruments.
Okay, great. Other than that, I think it's a, it's a real good idea to go with the pilot program, and I'd, I'd support it.
I have one warmer comment. This is an opportunity for business, but not all the businesses are going to take advantage of this. So this is just maybe an opportunity, not, not to think that every single restaurant's going to do it. I think it just allows the businesses for more flexibility.
All right. Council comments?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, I can attest to being able to hear live entertainment in Rancho Highlands, is where I live. I can actually hear the bell tower, so I don't know who I need to complain to, to file a noise complaint on that. But I kid. But it is, you know, a legitimate concern. We also have residents in Old Town. I do think, rather than focusing on, we kind of went down an instrument rabbit hole, I think we need to focus on the noise level versus instrument. I mean, someone could argue that a piccolo is too high-pitched, and they'd rather not hear the piccolo. And, you know, so I, I think we need to focus on the level, right, the decibel level more than anything, and not limit it. Maybe a restaurant wants to have a mariachi band, and we wouldn't want to close that out, right? So that's important, that we, that we don't focus too much on the actual music, but the levels. Is this specifically for businesses, and it is the use, potentially, the use of the public space in front of their business?
No, this is on private property.
So it's, it cannot be on the sidewalk. It has to be within their private space.
Yeah, the, the concept we have is private property.
Okay. I mean, that's important, because then it kind of opens some other, you know, like, do you have just sort of random folks coming down and throwing up on the corner front, and, you know, in main, and, and, you know, throwing down their guitar and playing, like, so those are things that I'm thinking about. So that, that's important to note. I'm overall supportive of this. I do think that with the newly-formed Old Town Local Advisory Committee, I think it needs to go there. I think we need to hear from the stakeholders from, from that group before we, we kind of send it to planning and then back up to council. But overall, I'm supportive. I think there needs to be a little more, you know, tightening up of this stuff. The idea of a pilot program's important. I think that's good. We've, we've tried some things in the past, pilot, and they didn't work, and we quickly, you know, flipped the script and changed it. So, to me, that's something that if it is a temporary pilot program, I can, I can get behind. But I, I think we need a little more conversation at the Old Town Local Advisory Committee, then obviously planning and council again. But overall, I think, you know, it'll help businesses. It'll draw, draw folks up to their businesses if they're not on front. And that's a complaint at times, if you're up on fifth and you're kind of away from, you know, that sort of walking, that foot traffic, it's important to be able to draw people in. So, overall supportive.
I am in favor of the potential for the pilot.
I am also, as right now, in favor of it. I, I agree with Councilmember Schwenk that we should definitely push it down to the Old Town Local Advisory Committee. Also, I like the fact that there is a resident on that board, so that way we can just get a little bit more feedback from any residents that live down in Old Town. So, great idea, Zach.
Well, I support it, so we'll, we'll give a review for.
I think we know where the mayor stands on this. Yeah, so I guess in some, from, you're all supportive of a pilot project. Devil's in the details. We clarified musician with the guitar. And I heard loud and clear from the city council, and maybe we'll take these a little bit out of order, but the city council is reviewing applications for the newly-appointed Old Town Advisory Committee. And that's probably 30 days out, I think, Luke. Are we still?
Yeah, the applicants will be interviewed at the second city council meeting in February.
February. So assuming that all goes well, we have, we are standing up this, this committee end of February. This can be one of the first agenda items that we task them with, and then sort of let them, as a body of seven, weigh in on this, and then tee it up for the planning commission and then back to council. That'll be our pathway. That'll be our route. So, unless there's any concerns with that. But that's what I heard, heard today.
Yep. All right. Sounds good. Anything else?
I think that, that's enough. Don't you?
I think that's plenty. All right, so I'll go ahead and adjourn.